Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the speaker to order and join us for the plan. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. It's being on March twenty seven, twenty twenty three was included in the meeting's notice. Send to the Hundredy County Democratic Courier News on January five, twenty twenty three. Posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on a date and remain continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public. And it's on file in the office of the Borough. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Englehart?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
Ms. Carol?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. We have Elizabeth Town Gas here to do discuss the two. Is Mr. Campion on the call by any chance?
No.
Or Mr. Vogt, any? Anybody, Bueller, anybody out there?
Do you want me to call Mike?
No, I was about to be late because he sent us the reminder that they were coming, so I thought he might might want to be, but I'm hoping that most of you are not angry constituents about anything and that you're all here for Elizabeth Town Gas, so. If you're all here from Elizabeth Town Gas, please raise your hands. Okay, so it's a mixed bag. All right. Not angry, I should say, you're saying, thank you. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. My name is your name for the record, please?
Certainly. My name is Stephanie Forrest, F-O-R-R-E-S-T.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I am, yes.
Because I see our I see your contractor is present, is doing your work, so I just want to make sure I got this here.
Yeah, so I, if I may, I can invite, so I have with me Brett Fisher, who's my colleague at Elizabeth Town Gas, he's with construction. I also have Tyler Kemp, also with Elizabeth Town Gas, he's right up there. And Andrew Garrett with SCOTA, who is the contractor. And so I'm going to have Brett and Tyler kind of give you a rundown on what we have planned in a little bit. They are the experts, but I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. Like I said, my name is Stephanie Forrest. I just started with Elizabeth Town Gas and South Jersey Industries in September. I'm with their external affairs team, specifically government relations. So on the construction side of the business, you're in good hands with Brett and Tyler. And we would be happy, you know, I'm here to talk about what we have coming up. However, I know that we had done work in the past, so if any of you, you know, have any questions, we would certainly, you know, be happy to talk about that first. You know, if you'd like to. If not, then I'll turn it over to Brett and to Tyler.
Well, one of the issues that we do have, I don't know if Mr. McNally spoke with you, not this Mr. McNally, you're this Mr. McNally.
Yes, Andrew is my boss.
Right, so as you are aware, I had a conversation with them on Friday.
Yes, yeah.
Right, so the council is not aware of that conversation. Mr. McNally is the head of government relations?
Yes, he's our director of government relations, yeah.
Who reached out to do reconnaissance on what we wanted. What our concerns were, besides just wanting to hear about the next phase of construction. And I, you know, I shared with him, as you are aware, that our biggest concern is that the work that has been done up till now was done under an old road opening ordinance, which we have now amended, so that anybody who's cutting into our roads now has to put it back fully, and the old one, you only had a fixed part of it.
Right.
And that is a huge concern because you have broken into roads that were pretty good, where there weren't cracks and crevices and potholes and whatever. And now we're going to end up with, you know, some cold joints that we're concerned about. And that there are a few roads around the Union Hotel construction area that are on your list to fix that we probably don't need you to fix because the redevelopment is going to have to, he's going to bang them up anyway, which for the equipment.
Okay.
So we want to work with you to make sure that the roads that are really important to us that you would only half-fix, get fixed, and the ones that aren't that important to us, where they're going to be fixed by somebody else down the road. Get addressed later and not waste your money.
Sure.
Or create a bigger hazard or problem by closing down the street unnecessarily.
Yeah.
To pave it. You know, unfortunately, unfortunately, we allow all of this road opening work to happen without having a good road opening ordinance in place. So, you know, you're under notice that we now have that in place where you're going to have to fully fix those roads as of two weeks ago. Or three weeks ago, something like that. So.
And forgive me for interrupting.
It's okay, Stephanie.
By that, you mean like curb-to-curb paving?
I do.
Okay, just want, you know, make sure I understand.
I do mean that, yes.
Okay.
We did not have that where it initially placed when this got approved. My personal opinion is we shouldn't let you do it without it, or without a real clear understanding of your, especially certain roads, like I said, you've broken into roads that I'm not even sure the bonds were paid off. I wish Bill hadn't left, because he could have told us that weren't done, they were done less than twenty years ago. They were now cracked into, and cold joints, you know, cold joints and the kinds, whether we get any more in New Jersey with a lot of freezing and rain and freezing and thawing is the worst.
Understood.
We need to know that we have a partner in Elizabeth Town Gas on this. On, you know, I know going forward, it is the ordinance is in place, but going backwards in time,
Right.
we need to know that you're going to, you know, do right by this town.
Well, you know, I think for us, you know, we are guests in your road, right? We're guests in your town. That's something Andrew and I talk about all the time, and we want to do, you know, what's right and what's best for the town, the city. And so, you know, as far as the paving goes and the construction side, you know, I defer to my colleagues because they can obviously talk about maybe why those decisions were made, maybe to have with paving or infrared paving. You know, previously, you know, that kind of predates before I was here, so I wouldn't want to overstep and, you know, speak out of turn, but I think that they might, you know, if you do have some questions, you know, about why those decisions were made in the past, they may be able to kind of, you know, talk through that for you. But I can say at least moving forward, you know, we understand that's the new ordinance, and we want to make sure that we, you know, adhere to whatever you have in place here in the best way we can. That makes both financial sense, you know, for your, for the folks living here, for us and for you. So, understood, and thank you for bringing that to my attention.
I mean, you know, the infrastructure of this town, especially gas lines, needs to be safe.
Yes.
I appreciate you knowing that you're a guest in our town.
Of course.
We want a nice house gift. We don't want too much. We need those roads, our roads are
Yeah, they're so important.
You are here for our budget hearing, you would know how, you know, we have a lot of capital budget issues and a lot of items, and we don't have a lot of money. So having to go back over roads that are, may not even be paid for, this is not.
Sure.
You know.
No, I understand.
Not begrudging how you need to do our roads and how you need to get into, into the roads to fix them. It's about taking care of them after, afterwards, and making sure those roads that are highly traveled and were in good shape get treated according.
Sure.
That's all. So it all comes down to money, and we know that.
Yeah.
And like I said, there's some roads that we don't need as much done to. So, you know, I'm going to ask our engineer and our CPW superintendent to figure that out and work with you.
Yeah.
And know that as you're moving forward, you know, that, that what was done needs to be taken care of as well, to some degree. To make sure that we don't have crumbling roads in the future.
Of course. Now, we, and we understand, I mean, having, you know, infrastructure in place that, you know, is safe and reliable is certainly, you know.
Also goes for roads that don't have, that aren't cracking and breaking apart and potholes, that's also safe in structure.
Sure, right.
People driving like safe gas lines on safe roads that aren't dangerous and hazardous.
Of course.
So, all right, so now, I don't know if anybody wants to chime in on that. Okay, so.
Well, ma'am, thank you very much for having me. Council members, thank you so much. I hope to be seeing you soon in the future. But I will turn it over to my colleagues. Like I said, I think they can give you a good rundown. We also have like a little nifty slideshow presentation for you, some slides that you can hand out. I think Brett, you have some extra copies. May I?
Go ahead, you continue.
Yeah, Brett, why don't you? We'll switch out.
Good evening.
Hi. You're Brett?
Yes. We are from the construction department. As you brought up for Phase One, we will be working closely with Mike Campion. We actually met him about two weeks ago, go through Phase One, and where you'll be paving, where we'll be paving. We also have a limited paving meeting, once all the work for Phase One is completed, just to go over any disturbances and what makes the most sense as far as paving for Phase One. He did also send me the ordinance, it was about a week or two ago, so we know that going forward, obviously, Phase Two, it will be curving, curving. Going into Phase Two, in the Mine and Benel Street and nearby areas. So what we're doing is similar to Phase One, we have ongoing pipeline replacement in all of our territories to replace any old cast iron mains with new durable plastic. In many cases, the gap meters are relocated from inside to outside the homes or businesses. Relocating these outside meters provides enhanced safety and reliability. Obviously, it's easier to access the meters in the event of an emergency or any additional inconvenience to the meter maintenance without the need of customers to be present. The next slide is streets that will be affected in this project. I think the main street that is on our list, Benel Street, from Park Ave all the way out to like the Raritan, I think it's like the Raritan Line, Mike showed us. Mine Street, Academy Street, Shields Ave, Central Ave, Lloyd Ave, there's a small section on Park Ave that we're just going to bring a little bit of main up. Over Road and Stangle Road. So the big question, obviously, we're going through Phase One right now. If granted permits, we'd like to start Phase Two on or about April seventeenth. That's when the main installation would start. Mike already said that he would like to have a pre-construction meeting with us either later this week or next week to go over where would make the most sense to start and move forward, as far as, I know we have a school, I believe, on Benel Street. That we probably have to work around their hours. So the main would start April seventeenth and then complete around the end of May, we're projecting May twenty third. If any questions?
So I do have a question, so I have two concerns, actually. One, there are the businesses, and how are you notifying the businesses on the dates? And it would be great if we had a schedule that the businesses can have, and if that's going to fluctuate, that there is some type of communication, I know that Mike and the police chief and FCP is going to meet this week, but my concern is that we don't want to get phone calls from the businesses saying, we didn't know this. It's a last minute thing, and they don't have company. The second part of that are the residents. So I know that you put things in people's mailbox and et cetera, et cetera, but they need to be reminded. So if it's that far out, you need to do it more than once. You know, repetitive, coming from an advertising background, more repetitive you are, the better you are, right? You've got to over-communicate this because there's, there are issues. There are issues when you're driving up a road and all of a sudden you have a detour, you live right on that street down there, and you're not sure how to get around it. So I think what I'm asking is you guys need to be a little bit more sensitive, and you need to be a little bit more proactive, and we would like, I'd like you to send the schedule to me, I'd like you to send the schedule to Mike, to FCP, everybody needs to know what's going on.
Can I just point you on that? Is the afterward, I also talked to Mr. McNally about this, is that some of our homeowners have reached out that, you know, there's, their Victorian sidewalk, slate sidewalk has been destroyed, their sidewalks were ripped up, and now there's ugly cat down, their lawns were chewed up. It would be great if there was a note saying, we are coming back to fix everything we destroyed, rather than them calling me, and we say to them, they are coming back.
We actually, we actually do have, we have noticed that Mailer gets it out, says, we'll be back.
Yeah.
It's Mailer versus just leaving it in their doors when they come home.
So we have a whole outreach team that sends project notices all throughout the project. Actually, the notices for this project would probably go out as long as we get permits this week for the first notification, that's the main notification, and then there's also one.
How's my curb-to-curb on the old stuff looking? Do we have permits this week? I've got, look.
We'd have to look at it, yeah, look at it with Mike and see. I didn't, I didn't look at all these projects. But I know there is some roads that you'll be paving, and there's roads that we'll be paving, so I'm sure we have some sort of agreement on what makes the most sense as part of paving for Phase One. But to your point, I will definitely, you know, pass that along. Andrew's been in communication with, with Mike, I think, I actually just looked today, and I see our whole schedule for the week is actually on the town website, so that's good to see.
Yeah, we put that in place after I had some really ugly conversations with people counseling. Where I had a conversation with the chief, and the chief has actually agreed that, you know, seven o'clock in the morning is going out to the site, or having McNally or somebody else go out to the site and and Corporal McNally, somebody's going out, making sure they're, they're where they said, I guess, I guess, sometimes you have got a comment was supposed to be to do work in one area and sorry, in another area. I don't know what was going on last week, but.
It was a mess.
It was a mess. My emails were ugly, my phone calls were ugly. So we put some temporary stuff in place to make sure that the public getting noticed and, you know, and overdone is without the moving the moving thing of Elizabeth Town Gas lines.
Absolutely. It gets harder when you get to services, because especially the tail end of services, you might get different people on different streets, so you have to kind of move with the schedule. Usually at first, we can kind of phone in a whole street and get as many people as possible.
And, you know, and that's understandable. I don't think anybody's saying
No, no, yeah.
It's the communication of that. So if there is, I mean, even to tell, to tell the, you know, the neighborhood that we may have to change, if we can't get into your house, that we may have to fluctuate and go to, so but we would give some type of notice of when that's going to happen, so everybody knows it's going to happen, right? It's just that it just happens, and then you get phone calls. So that's fine for the website and all that. Again, something needs to go to the businesses. All the businesses, here's the schedule, here's where we're coming to you, this is when it's going to affect you, et cetera, et cetera. That needs to be, that needs to be put in their, in their mailbox, it needs to be taken to their stores, or places of business, or whatever the case may be. It needs to be a hand delivery, because what, what you're currently playing right now is not working.
Yeah, and, you know, your next phase, a lot of this is residential, but at Volker Stangle, you know, that, and the roads to get over at Stangle. You know, they really, including origination, where they, you know, a lot of the people that go visit there may not know there's nothing way into that site, like Clementonian stuff, you know.
Stangle and Stangle is a relatively short section that we're playing in, so we should begin it out there in a day or two. So I think that's probably, just providing the project is probably the most invasive area as far as, like, putting out graphic public, but, so I'm hoping to talk with Andrew before the meeting, I think we should get in there a day or so.
So, so I get in that you've mailed to the residents and the businesses and saying, we're sorry, we messed up your property, we're going to be back. Is there any way to just leave them a note as well when they actually leave the worksite? So, because I was getting hostile emails and whatever on Friday, so they're not going to get their letters until, with this postal system anymore, they're not going to get their letters for weeks or days or whatever.
Let's get those, and I can actually hand them out as well as mail. Yeah, also, it's also a tough time of year, you know, it's hard at restoration.
I just want to know you're coming back.
We should be getting that when we're scheduling the work with them, because we're not, we have to actually gain access to the residents to do the work. So we can do a better job on our, and conveying the whole process of what's going to happen, why we're scheduling. And I will make sure it's good or.
That'd be great. I mean, most, I think most people know that you're, you're not going to leave, you know, and you're not like some fly-by-night company, you're here. They know that you're going to come back and make it right, but, you know, with some people
Yeah.
come home and they see it, and they're like, you know, they don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll get extras to hand out, you know, as well as mail. In our, our, our community outreach team, you know, in the mailers that we send out, there are a lot of pictures showing what the sidewalk, what your sidewalk looks like right now. As for performing the work.
What you can do about the Victoria's Link, it's broken up by your, by the work.
That's something we'll have to discuss. I wasn't aware about any of that, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of slate in this town. And a lot of it is still in good shape, so.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
The challenging part to that is we, we can't bore in the town right away, so everything, everything that we installed in the town right away hasn't been dug, because there was problems in the past of boring through drains and things like that, so the decision was made that there's no more boring, so unfortunately we're not allowed to, but we can do a better job of communicating what's going to.
If we weren't allowed to bore, that would eliminate a lot of some permanent sidewalk.
The whole town, a lot of stuff down there. Some abandoned in place and rebuilt. So if you find you need hockleheads.
Not on Benel Street.
What else you want to tell us?
Yeah, so just getting back to the central gas replacements are scheduled to start on or about June ninth. And then we'll go throughout the summer to, we're projecting August fifteenth, we should be done with services. The abandonment of fall, that usually takes about a week or two, to abandon all the old infrastructure. And then, and it just, so you're aware, any trenches that are dug during the day will be, you know, backfilled and patched immediately, so they'll be traversable as we did for Phase One.
So wait, so you're proposing to start sometime in the beginning, end of, beginning of May, end of April, and finishing it by the middle of August?
Finishing, we probably finish beginning of September.
Beginning of September.
Services will be August fifteenth, we're thinking right now.
And then is that the end of Phase Two till next year for Phase Three?
That would be the end of Phase Two.
And then.
We don't have any work at the end of this year, and then we work, we will work on Phase Two paving at that point.
Okay.
Probably.
Because I know there's another phase coming.
Probably twenty twenty four, yeah.
Okay.
This next year.
Okay, we're still construction, we're already in this town. Um, okay. Any questions so far from the council?
And then our, our last page is just, you know, as we talked about with outreach and communication, we have our outreach team. I can actually leave a packet of cards here, it has like a number on it.
That's great.
You can hand out or leave here in the home. To your, sorry to cut you off, but to your point about getting phone calls, I refer them to the community outreach number.
Me too.
Yeah, and we can, we can take the heat, and we can take all, all of that, and we can, we can rectify everything, you know, right in house. No way you don't have to deal with phone calls. Not saying that, you know, you don't want to talk to your residents, but.
I love talking to my residents, and, you know, and some people say I'm full of gas with a powder drop.
But we have a dedicated team that deals those phone calls all day long from different projects, so.
You'll be placing card films, great. Oh, good. Engelhardt, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you for putting the, the presentation on the website. That was one of my questions, and thank you for addressing the sidewalk. That's part of the ordinance as well. My question is, if this schedule gets updated, can the council members be included in that schedule distribution?
Absolutely.
Please.
We, we'll get all, we'll get all the emails, we'll gather all the emails.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh. Night, night work? No more, no less, okay.
Dynasty's slow down.
We prefer not to. Hey, the only thing about jump out of our hours is maybe this school schedule, whether it be a Saturday or just working around the school schedule on Benel Street. Do you know when the buses coming now there?
Driver, doctor.
There. Benel Street is not an active, it's not where the kids load and unload. That's over on Court Street, but there are some bus rocks that go up and down Benel. I'm lucky enough that I don't have one of those. I do live in Benel.
Eight thirty though, correct, is what they're looking for more of the timeframe for eight, eight thirty?
It depends, because there's, you're talking K to eight. You know, the only kids that walk will be anybody in the borough going to intermediate school, other than that, your elementary and the, you know, the middle school, the JPK school, those kids get a bus.
Well, Engel, do you know, they're going to be putting out no parking signs on either side of the street?
When, when SCOTA is doing the work?
When else?
Yeah, so generally, Mike Campion's team does assist with putting those no parkings out, and I, and then you guys move the cones daily, is that how it's been working? So, yeah, so like as they jump the morning of, once the road closes, then the SCOTA team then jumps the cones to where it's going to be the next day with the, with the postings on it.
It's, it's actually, if people park on both sides of the street, so it's not real wide in the center. And do you know what, what your hours of work are that you guys are looking to?
Typically work seven to three thirty. You know, we'll certainly work with the buses. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of getting the buses in. Just Benel Street, you know, that they have to be tighter with is like garbage day. Yep, great. Because obviously that's been a problem. Yeah. Yeah, and if, if you could provide like the garbage schedule, I'm not sure if they would have Thursday. Thursday's, yeah, Thursday and Friday for regular. Okay. Every other. Yeah, that, that always helps, but.
And were you guys working just Monday to Thursday, and if you needed to work on Friday, or were you Monday? Monday?
Stephanie, anybody else, anything else? Good?
No, thank you so much.
Anybody else in the council lives, anything? Councilwoman Rosetti? Anything else, Councilwoman Engelhardt?
Yeah, I thought of one more thing, when you mentioned the garbage. When you guys did Broad Street a few weeks ago, I had to, like, chase down my garbage can, because it ended up like two blocks away. So can, when you are doing the garbage, when it's garbage day, can you guys just be aware of if you're taking it on one side, and, you know, if you're working on one side, and, you know, where people are putting their garbage out, because things are getting lost
Right.
in the shuffle. Thank you. If it happened to me, it probably will happen to somebody else.
One of our main things is making sure the garbage trucks recycle, gets in and out, and also the school buses was the main thing that we're always looking forward to get through.
All right, thank you very much for coming to our time. Thanks to all of the parts. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. I just have a big report tonight, I, I did want to, I'm going to not steal the council, like, whether you're about the fire company dinner, but I do want to say thank you to the fire company for inviting you to their dinner, it was lovely. I do want to announce that North Fields Bank has agreed to underwrite and co-sponsor with us the fireworks group July third. They are donating ten thousand dollars to the town to make sure those happen this year. So that was very nice of them, and a big, big shout out to North Fields Bank. And I think I think I'm leaving it at that. So, Council President, you have a report.
I do. Thank you. Good evening, folks. Police Department news, not a ton, but the Police Department would like to remind residents and motorists that there is a new stop sign at Church and Brown at that intersection. Please also be on alert for construction going on. Throughout the town, the department is still looking to hire an officer through the police app. The Citizen Police Academy is coming up the end of May. You can still sign up, and if you have any questions, permission to apply, you can contact Corporal Lewis Rivic at L-H-R-I-V-I-K at FlemingtonPD.com. Court news, not much, other than there'll be two light court sessions taking place in April and one in May. It's all being done leading up to the court merger between Flemington Borough and Raritan Township. So there'll be more news to come. Uh, so there'll be more news to come on in that regard. Um, I have some news about Flemington, uh, Community Garden. Uh, I've been passed along these notes, and, uh, actually, Councilwoman Engelhardt's gonna take it, uh, starting next weekend, ne- next meeting. But for now, I can talk to you about what happened yesterday, there was a, let's get this garden starting, started. Event at Tuckamergan Park, volunteers cleaned up brush for the park and filled the garden beds two thirds of the way. Next up is filling of compost, uh, special thanks to Factory Fuel for supplying coffee for the volunteers. The next meeting is Sunday, four two, at three P M at Factory Fuel, and that's my report.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Billy?
On the fourteenth, we had a D W meeting, one of the things I did bring up, Mr. Prebet, was, uh, getting a full can back on North Main Street. Were they able to?
Yes, sir.
It is? Uh, as well as permanent parking on Cather and Genny Cap spot on Cather. Um, let's see, then the fourteenth went on to an F C P and a fire department meeting regarding corn beer tomato, which mark your calendars, it's gonna be August twelfth. Then that night, I had a fire officers meeting, thirteenth with H P C, and as the mayor mentioned, uh, this past Saturday, I just wanna. Send out a special thank you to the fire department's ladies' night committee for the awesome. Dance that we had on Saturday, I thoroughly enjoyed myself, and it's always a, a fun event, and I look forward to it. Um, going back to the permit parking now, I think that's something that I'd like to really look at that ordinance. Um, I was fortunate enough to meet Mr. Parker at his home one day during the day, during school hours, and. It's permit parking only, so I don't have a permit, you didn't get a ticket, no. No, 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 but I came to rural hall, and I came to Mr. Parker's, and I cannot apply for a permit, since I'm a resident. I cannot, because there, my street is not a permitted parking street. So I think that's something we need to reassess in the town, I'm not so sure whether that's a D W issue, or if that's done through the police department or.
So, so, so everybody lives on the Highland Central High School side of the town.
Right.
We have permit only, and we didn't get two visitor passes, so Mr. Parker should have.
I just, I want to, in the borough, I should see them, so why can't I just get a permit to parking that? No, but I can't, because Vanelle Street is not on approved, like, the permitted.
Correct. And where you live, they can't drive yet.
Right.
And that's cool, so that's.
So I just didn't know, that's something that we wanted.
Let's, 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 yeah, to, uh, let's talk to the chief, and let's talk about doing a work session, just dash out. You know, how it's all worked and why.
Right.
And without it, I'll tell you, like, there was nowhere to park on my side of town before they put this.
No, I totally understand why the purpose of it.
Right, that's really the issue, but, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll do that on our session.
Okay.
Okay?
And that was, that's, that's.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that's.
All right. Um.
Because I want to.
Exactly.
Wait a minute.
All right, uh, we're on my Councilwoman Engelhardt.
Hit unmute?
Yeah, I just, I'm not quick enough with the button, sorry, trying to get there. Uh, okay, um, don't have a ton to report, uh, today, with the exception of planning board, uh, meeting tomorrow, seven P M. Uh, uh, for B S D development, otherwise, uh, people would be familiar with that site as. Spice Factory, there's a preliminary and final public hearing on that, um, property. Um, and other than that, uh, Marcia already went through the fireworks, um, Liz and Kim and I have been working. Um, hard on that the last few weeks, and, uh, of course, that's on the agenda for later as well to execute that contract. And, uh, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Johnson.
Hi, Mayor, thank you, um, I have no report this week, but I just wanted to make one statement. Um, under the advice of my legal counsel, I am not permitted to discuss anything to do with the charges brought against me. Um, but I am deeply sorry for any embarrassment I have caused this council of all boroughs.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Parker.
So, Ken, the funny story is. I live on that street, and I did not know that you needed a permit department's meeting, so we were getting some work done in the back of the house. So I parked my car on the street, and I got a ticket. I really did, it was so fun, I want that, but, what? So I, the sign that said that you need this permit is a little bit further down from my house, so I never saw a sign, and I'm like, what the hell? And, yeah, I, so.
But you should have parked.
To be a good citizen, I did pay the ticket because ignorance is those.
You should have parked facing the wrong direction, because they don't ticket for that, in this town, I keep being told by.
No, they do.
Well, anyway, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to welcome your pain. Yeah. Um, so, for me, there's just a couple of things, one is, is that, um. Um. We are actually met with, I was invited to meet with the Stangle, uh, businesses, which was a great meeting, and it was really interesting to, actually to even meet. All the owners in Stangle, um, and, um, just talk about what they're doing, what their concerns are, and things like that. Um, Robin facilitated the meeting, it was actually, it was actually really, really good, um. We are, do you have a signed agreement for the newsletter? For L P I, so we are officially gonna be launching the newsletter, um, well. Sometime in August, no, we're, we're gonna try for July, but I think we can't get it done until August because of the timing, uh, but it's coming, so it will be a quarterly newsletter. Um, I'm going to rely on a lot of the apartments within the, the borough, and some of the, uh, outreach to the community as well, to get, um, some articles in there. Um, and, um, so, yeah, I'm excited about that, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a lot of work, and Mike Humphrey actually, um, volunteered to kind of help me guide you through this. Uh, in terms of the content, and in terms of helping me form things like that, because he's got experience in doing that, so I am absolutely gonna be the student for the next, for the first, for sure. Um, the other thing is, is that, um. We, uh, in terms of F C P, the other thing that's going on is that we are. F C P is actually doing a really good job with trying to get things more organized in terms of communication between the business owners for, throughout the community. Um, and that doesn't include just Main Street, because people are just focused, they're either on Main Street or on Stangle, but it's outside as well, it's the shops in Flemington. Um, it's, um, Rebuild Road, uh, places like that, so the whole idea is to get, you know, one, one rope, one direction. So, other than that, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, and that leaves Councilwoman Reddys.
Thank you, Mayor, um, okay, so first, I do have some good news regarding the, um, flag that is in disrepair in front of the building with the post office in it. Um, our code enforcement official, Dave Giuliani, has been in touch with the appropriate people, and that will be being taken care of. Um, I did see some people out there yesterday with a ladder, it seems there is a little, uh, holdup with the pulley system, but it will be remedied, um, soon. Um, in regards to more codes and zoning information, uh, some residents did get noticed last week about their garbage cans being out too long after garbage day, so. Um, they have been given reminders, and this is another reminder for me, please make sure you bring your garbage cans in, um, in a timely manner. After garbage and recycling days, they should not be staying out throughout the weekend. Um, in terms of a few other things, um, there was some garbage that was spilled on North Main, the road department was notified about that. Um, Broad Street Automotive, there's been some overcrowding of car issues for a long time, and, um, the cars, though, are being towed, and the number reduced, so that's good news. Um, and then, lastly, I did, uh, receive an email yesterday regarding questions about, um, construction, uh, surrounding the courthouse square project. Um, I don't have real information to report yet, but I just want to acknowledge I received that, and I will be following up with our construction official, that's all for tonight, thank you.
Well, you're high speed tonight, Councilwoman, thank you very much.
Hey, Liz, can I ask you a question, so for the, the, the garbage cans that are left out, what, is there like a fine or something that goes on with?
I guess they could be ticketed, but at this point, it was just a, a notice of reminder for people, um, you know, we, we try not to jump to fines right away, but.
Punitive or whatever.
You know, Norton does allow for a fine if it's repetitive or.
Yeah.
So, some people just go away.
Forget it, yeah.
Marcia?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, I completely forgot about the schools, I just wanted to remind everybody that there's a special meeting at the, um, high school, um, district. Um, tomorrow night at seven o'clock. It's not on the normal schedule.
Okay, do they have a specific topic that they're doing?
Um, I believe it's, um, I'm, I'm not, I honestly am not sure, I know that one of the items on the agenda is to discuss the, um, uh, social media. Possible social media posts of one of the Board of Ed members.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Uh, administration.
Thank you.
I'll be quick, uh, let paint inspection notice this one out, we could schedule, I know how much you like it.
No, I'm just feel sorry for you, because you got, and you dated with.
Well.
Angry people.
That would happen, so, but, uh, we've started our first scheduling, um, looks as though we'll have enough volume, but the, the inspections will happen once a month, it'll be the first Tuesday this month. The, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow at twelve thirty to discuss candidates application, hopefully. Everything will, will sew everything up, and within a week, we'll have applications up. Uh, I expect it to be a, a pretty party, um. Application best. Wanted to discuss the April eleventh meeting.
Or April ten, or twelve?
Well, it may need to be April tenth, if you want the budget to be on May eight, because that's exactly twenty eight days.
Okay.
Twenty seven days, and it's one.
So when did we actually notice it for?
The eleven. It had to be the passover, we were, there, there was, there was concern that we should have it on the Tuesday, not the Monday afternoon. We can notice it back to April tenth, which will give us exactly twenty eight days, if we want to have the public hearing for the budget, and that's if you're introducing it.
I mean, I'm okay moving it back to Monday night, is Engelhardt, are you okay moving it to Monday night? The tenth?
Um, that's fine with me, I will be remote that day.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that, so.
Yeah.
We have, so it's currently known for Tuesday?
It's currently known for the eleventh, so I will tomorrow notice it for the tenth.
Okay, do we need, we need to change that by resolution, all right, can I have a motion to move the, uh, meeting for, our first meeting in April, from the eleventh back to the tenth? Your second?
Oh, no, sorry.
I'll favor.
All right.
Thank you, um, that was why, it wasn't because, it wasn't moved because of Easter Monday, it was moved because of possible passover. Okay, well, good, I'm not there anyway.
I got coverage, I was scrambling, Bill Saville was gonna come here, and he's eighty five.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, uh, for the agenda, we have two things, we took one rated resolution off, which is resolution twenty twenty two dash eighty five, that's an easement. Um, just so you know, the potential buyer didn't like the easement, and didn't like the resolution, so.
This is not on Main Street, that little.
Yeah, Main Street, forty four Main Street is looking to be purchased, and the buyer does not like the easement, which will allow us to take this building down on our decision, so. But, uh, that still needs to be worked on, so right now, it's being pushed to the next meeting, meeting in April. And second, uh, you may see in front of you a, uh, resolution that was honestly put together just minutes before the budget meeting, uh, twenty twenty three dash ninety two. And this, um, yeah, we'll, we'll get to it, but I wanted to let you know.
Is it on the agenda, or do we need to amend the agenda?
We have to amend the agenda, but I have this in front of you, so, and bringing it up now.
Okay, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to add resolution twenty twenty three dash ninety two, operating a per diem rate of up to twenty eight dollars per hour for municipal court support?
Tell him, Johnson, sir.
Uh, any discussion on amendment to the agenda? Roll call, please.
Mr. Single Heart?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
And Stella?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's number eight, twenty twenty three dash, what did I just say, ninety two, okay, thank you very much, uh, anything else, Mr. Humphrey?
Uh, I'm, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, um, at this time, we're gonna open up to public comments, uh, session number one, uh. If you have anything to say to the governing body, this is the comment period, if you come to the microphone, get your name and your municipality for the record. Um, we have a lot of people, I may limit the time, I'm trying not to do that, um, so there will be a second comment period at the end of the year. You, you don't have to raise your hand, you just come on, come on down. Your name and your municipality.
My name is Maureen Kellen, I live in Flemington Borough, which I've lived in Flemington for fifty two years. And I came to address Malik Johnson. And I'm asking you to resign, I don't have a full understanding of how the governing body works, but I'm just starting to learn. I want everyone here to know that I know Malik on a personal basis, is that right, Malik? Can you look at me, please? Look me in the eye, I am gonna tell this body what you did. My daughter was eighteen years old, she's twenty now, I have the dates right here. My daughter, Olivia Kellen, went to Burlington Coat Factory to buy herself an outfit, when she came out of that door and went to walk to her car. You approached her and asked her if she was Maureen's kid, and she said yes, and then you asked her if she does crystal. That's what you asked her. And she got back in the car and raced home and said, mommy, you know that guy Malik in the red car? He asked me if, if I do crystal, what's crystal? Malik, look at me, because I just need you to look for a minute, you have children, by the way, my daughter says she goes to school with one of your sons. So how can you ask my child, my beautiful child, if she wants to buy crystal? I am four years in recovery from opium, I lost my boyfriend and three best friends. I have no time, you better look at me, I saw you in Shoprate last night. How are we supposed to walk around and look at you? There is somebody that could sit in that chair and make a difference. And I am so sorry that I didn't become more involved twenty years ago, but it's too late, here we stand, how dare you take that seat? And another thing, I have been going to A A for over twenty years, and I'll tell you why, I love it. It's one hour of medicine and mental health for a dollar, you put in a basket, I respect it so much, there was times I didn't need to go. But the camaraderie, I met you there, you are a predator of the next level. You came into those A A meetings on Church Street, um, Broad Street, all around the vicinity. And you don't even claim to have an alcohol or addict problem, you went in there and you fished out the young women, the beginners. I'm brokenhearted over that, I actually looked at my texts from years ago, and I congratulated you and told you I voted for you. I feel stupid, naive, goalful, oh, this goes on, the shame is so deep, but if you ever go near my daughter again. I don't know what I'll do, you need to step down. Look at me, what is wrong with you, what kind of weak man's there and scribbles, and we'll look at the woman in her eyes, what's wrong with you? There's no way you can represent, you understand you're unfit, first of all, nobody goes around selling meth, cocaine, and heroin, and weed, by the way. And he delivers it like an Uber, like an Uber, he delivers it to people. There was a gentleman on Dewey Street that was in A A with me, I loved him as a person. He was weak and vulnerable, he called me the night before he died, years ago. He was getting his stuff from you. His name is Tony, I don't know his last name, I can't remember it. I can't barely think about all these people that I grew up with that aren't here no more. I regret that I ever had an addiction problem, I'm sorry, I'm ashamed of it. I regret that I ever had an addiction problem. I'm sorry. I'm ashamed of it. Working on it all the time, every day. And how dare you come into AA meetings and fish out the young women? That's what you did. It wasn't men you approached. It wasn't the men. So I'm a single mother, a sole parent, no father. And for you to do that to my daughter and I can't legally come up there and punch you in the nose? It's unheard of. So I'm going to sit here and figure out how we get him to resign. And I don't know who your lawyer is. Bad advice. Bad advice.
If he was feeling. And we open to public? Name, address?
Adrian Cusaro, twenty-three Maple Avenue.
You don't have to write for three, four, five.
I'm not a uh, protected person. Malik, you need to step down. Now I know, I thought it was one voice. Now there's multiple voices. And it's not going away. This is not going away because the next thing is a door-to-door petition asking you to step down. You need to step down now.
Anybody else in the public? Good evening, men, mayor, council president, other council members.
My name is Tim Marie Riddell. I reside in Skilman in Somerset County. Um, I'm here this evening to introduce myself. Um, I am the managing partner of Four Leaf, a cannabis cannabis venture group. Um, we are comprised of highly trained individuals with experience in uh, medicine, nursing, pharmaceuticals, business professionals, banking and finance, and our four main principles are all women. So uh, we have deep roots in New Jersey and we are um, our mission is to open a therapeutic integrative support ATC and provide a restorative and peaceful environment. Um, we want to build first of its kind of best-in-class ATC right here in Flemington. Uh, our clients will receive support from full-time nursing staff uh, as part of their wellness team. The cornerstone is individualized treatment options while participating in research and advancing patient outcomes. And we're here to educate patients so that they are empowered to be decision-makers for their own care uh, care clients. So we're also building um, alliances with veteran-owned cultivation and processing company to develop new products and to create a community outreach amongst the veteran population that is so significantly impacted by PTSD, anxiety, sleep issues, and chronic pain uh, from injuries. Uh, here tonight also is Colonel Chris Kidd. Uh, he will have a moment to introduce himself and talk uh, more specifically about that. Um, in addition to that, I'm here to introduce Chris Weeding of Weed Cat. He's a professional in cannabis. Um, he's a consultant. He can speak about our strategic alliance that we put together um, in helping to build a relationship here with Flemington and with um, the Veterans Association. Do you have any specific questions about uh, me and my experience in nursing?
Can you just say your last name?
Sure. Riddell, R-I-D-A-L-L, and my first name Tim Marie, T-I-M-O-R-Y. No, I was not supposed to be a boy.
Nice name, nevertheless.
Thank you. I appreciate it now, but middle school is.
No, I examine any questions for this regard? Okay, thank you.
My name is Christopher Weeding. I was born and raised in Dullesboro, with the Macillau High School. I currently live on Moby Town with my wife and three young children. I've been working exclusively in the cannabis industry for the last ten years since, actually since two thousand twelve, so just over ten years. I've been involved with a number of projects first in in Connecticut. I was the CFO of a company called Theraplan, here the first medical grow processor in the state of Connecticut. Been involved in a number of other projects across six or seven states and the two countries. And I've uh, been a part of financings over a hundred million dollars in space. So uh, incredibly proud to have connected Tim Marie's group to the Flemington project. I think we will have a an extremely unique offering in the form of the Wellness Center that we're going to be bringing to the facility. The piece of property that we're looking at currently is is uh, probably the twenty-four thousand square feet. And we expect to fill up most of that with the cannabis dispensary in the Wellness Center. And we really feel like the the Wellness Center that we'll be putting in Flemington will be a um, you know, branded for for veterans selling products uh, produced and manufactured by veterans. And uh, I think we'll attract veterans, not just from Huntington County, but from from all over New Jersey. So with that, I want to introduce Chris Kidd, who is uh, the founder and operator of Paratus Enterprises, which is a cultivator based in Gordon Town. Chris is, lives nearby and.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as uh, I'm a retired Colonel, by the way. The beer's uh, wasn't allowed to wear that during the active duty days. Uh, but yeah, I spent twenty-eight years in on on in the military, both in an active and reserve uh, status. Uh, most of the, I've spent about eighteen years in a reserve status, uh, going back and forth between Long Island and and Fort Dix, uh, the primary, my my two duty stations. I was in the reserves. I did uh, two tours uh, in Iraq and I was blown up in one of them and I sustained injuries to my shoulder, which left me permanently disabled. Uh, I have a an eighty percent disability rating with the Veterans Administration for both my shoulder and my PTSD. And I can tell you that uh, sleeping for the last sixteen years has been a bit of a challenge. Okay? Um, as an officer, uh, it is a binary issue in the military. Uh, it is a flat no. You do not partake in anything cannabis, any any drug for that matter, other than alcohol. Even then, you you gotta be careful, especially as an officer. Um, so uh, I did not have a lot of experience with the drug, uh, probably since college. And yes, I did inhale, uh, when I was in college at one time. The uh, experience that I've had since I've been retired has been uh, tremendous. I don't use it all the time, but when I do use it, I get phenomenal sleep. And it's why I started this business. I wanted to find a way to uh, combine the 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 medicinal qualities of of CBD, because I used to, I used to use the CBD on my back. My wife would rub it on my shoulders, uh, because both of them are problematic at night when you sleep. I'm a side sleeper. That is too much information here, but they call, I have to flip back and forth overnight and constantly make it up. Um, so the CBD helps, but it wears off. Um, but when I've used uh, cannabis, uh, it doesn't wear off and I can get a really, really good night's sleep. So I enjoy the uh, use of it. However, I'm not a big smoker, well, not a smoker at all for that matter, and I don't like inhaling anything, um, whether it's a clove cigarette, a regular cigarette, or marijuana cigarette. I just don't like inhaling it. It just doesn't work well with my lungs. Uh, so I use the gummies uh, typically, but the problem is, is you get a, you don't get a very good, uh, you you know, you get a varying range of of effects or experience depending on what time of day you take it, how much you have in your stomach. Um, so we're 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 looking at different opportunities to develop uh, you know, products. Uh, and that's where I got involved with uh, Mr. and Mrs. Riddell. Uh, Mr. Riddell is the, well, former chairman, not retired chairman, retired.
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 His son is the chief executive officer of a company called Orcosa. And they have been working on uh, developing a delivery system for for all kinds of pharmaceuticals and and drugs that um, promote anything from nicotine to agri to uh, CBD, uh.
Lots of options.
Yeah. The beauty about this this mechanism or this 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 way, this drug delivery system is that it gives you a consistent experience. And and so for me, you know, in partnering with with the Riddells, uh, I just see this as a tremendous opportunity to kind of bring this this CBD THC combined um, product along u- using a delivery system like like Orcosa has uh, developed. And giving, you know, give give people the consistent experience so they can they can rely on it, right? And they don't have to oh, you worry about smoking it or taking three gummies and overdosing that, you know, to that night. Um, or for that that time period. So that's that's primarily why I got involved in the business.
I need you to.
Okay, anyway, but that's that's pretty much it. So I, that's why.
I see your municipality for the record, please.
Oh, I live in Annandale and
and.
Yeah, and I grew up uh, in the Shanty Station, so I've been I've been living around here for shopping.
Anything else you just want to conclude with?
No, I'll turn it back over. I'm sorry.
Just say thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, anybody else from the public?
I just want to.
Your name, your name and your.
Sorry, I should know by now. Susan Lacks, CEO of Huntington Helpline, One Maple Avenue, Flemington. I just want to publicly thank uh, Councilman Parker for coming over to Helpline and talking to me about salsa night and also getting the tour and learning more about what we do here in the community. Uh, it was very appreciated and again, the invitation is for everyone. But I hope you were impressed with our uh, small but powerful facility. So thank you again.
My pleasure. And yes, I was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lacks. Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll have, we'll do this all again at the end. Mister Prevent, I just need your name and municipality for the record.
Yeah, Tony Prevent, I'm in D'Barro. Uh, I appreciate the time you took, uh, to, you know, for the trash receptacles. I'm just looking at, you know, the void between my house and up there. If they add another one, yeah, we have to block it. If we use, uh, if it can be done.
Don't go up with Bish Camp.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Rosetti, in terms of flag, I'll give you an update. I just got to, you know, contact you about that. Uh, I thank, I thank you for, you know, you're pursuing that. Uh, far as the council goes, is there any type of um, enforcement with white holes on residential or commercial business properties in terms of like this the horrible one on Main Street? Is there, is there anything?
There is not. It's a natural federal law. It is not a state law.
Right, but we don't have nothing here.
Not in any of our books.
There is a.
We do not.
Okay, yeah, I know. It's like self-policing. This thing was just an.
Agreed. Thank you for bringing it.
Okay, uh, Liberty Village. Uh, can anybody give me like just a timeline or just a brief overview?
So the redevelopment is in the audience tonight. Um, so we are going through his financial documents now. On our agenda tonight, we approve um, a professional board with the behalf of the council in the town, uh, who is a financial expert on reading redevelopment, financial financials. Um, to approve him and and uh, at our next meeting, we'll be having an executive session, I hope, with all of our professionals to talk to the council regarding the agreements and the financials. And then two weeks after that, the last meeting in April, I believe, Mr. Malone already had been invited in in writing by our attorney to come and talk to us under, it'll be an executive session under contract negotiation. Um, and that's where that's at.
Now, is there a blueprint anywhere available?
There is no blueprint. There's a drawing of a site plan.
Just a drawing of the site plan, preliminary.
Fair.
In effect. So we're looking, let's say, down the road. How many years before, let's say, something like this would actually break ground?
Well, it depends on whether or not we could put a well in or not, but um.
You can say the well goes in.
D E P permitting uh, a year, two years for D E P permits and he wants, what he told me was that he wants to do phase one in three phases. So that's three years for phase one plus infrastructure, which could take a year. I mean, look, the Union Hotel, as Mister Humphrey pointed out to me today, said it was approved and it took six years for them to get to this point.
All right. So between Liberty Village, Hope Well Project, you know, this, we're talking like, let's say, five years before we break round on everything.
Possibly. I I don't.
Five years.
I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, I can tell you none of the, only one project's been to the planning board, two have not, none have pilots. Um.
All right. And well, in terms of whatever we're talking cannabis here, uh, I noticed that on Royal Road closer to the Pennsylvania, I'm a second, I know it's Rowan Township.
Thank you.
But anyway, if anybody here has knowledge, there's sixteen acres being cleared there behind the landscaping uh, business there. It's, you know, again, it's in Rowan Township. But if anybody here, Susan, uh, you know, if you're listening, uh, it, could that possibly be a cultivation site that they're keeping?
Rowan Township doesn't have any licenses.
It did not, did it?
What?
It did not.
Yeah, Rowan Township didn't, is is not doing any marijuana at this cannabis at this point.
Oh, okay. Because like I say, based on the discussion at the last meeting, et cetera, et cetera. That's a pretty large.
Yeah, they're not, they did not need to do any any cannabis licensing, including cultivation. So it's not that.
Okay. Well, like I said, I hear a lot of talk, you know, about the size, the acres you need to put something like that, you know, to go down. And I just saw this thing there and I'm going, wow, it's a you know, maybe Rowan Township knows about it. I don't know, but it was just curious that you could see this and everything clear. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Prevent. Anybody else from the public have any comments?
Yeah, George Valoon, uh, I live in Bedminster. I'm the owner of Liberty Village and um, I I was, I was glad to hear you said those dates and I just wanted you to just repeat them because I unfortunately, grabbing my notebook, about the time I had my pen out, you were done.
So so we're going to have an executive session uh, in two weeks on now April tenth to discuss uh, with our professionals, all the agreements and whatever. And then I know that Mister Warren sent to Mister Pepe an invitation to you to put it on your calendar to come here the following meeting, which is the twenty-fourth of April.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second of April?
No, twenty-fourth.
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 Twenty-fourth of April.
And what's going to happen that night?
There'll be an executive session to discuss your redevelopment event in. And.
And if everybody's satisfied, could there be a vote that night?
Possibly, sure.
Okay. So I thought it would be helpful if the council could give me maybe ten minutes later, public session, and I can just run through these handful of changes to the redevelopment agreement?
No.
And explain them transparently in front of the community, in front of all the council.
No. We're going to discuss it with our professionals first. And the council will get educated on from our professionals. And.
Marcia, you know, these are not legal issues. These are business issues.
I know they're.
So it'd be nice to be able to explain it as a business plan before you go into closed session. So everybody's familiar with it going in. Why should they go in cold? Talk to a lawyer who doesn't understand the business.
Get to the next public session.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see what time we get to the next public session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public? Okay. Uh, there are no minutes to approve tonight. We've got the nothing on the consent agenda.
Correct.
Okay. A public hearing. We have one public hearing, uh, which is ordered in twenty-two three twelve, and then you check the licensing general. Section four dash three retail food establishment, subject to section four dash three point two P municipal code of the borough of Flemington. Amendment fees assessed for temporary retail food establishments. I have a motion to open to the public. Tell him. If there's a second. Uh, all in favor? Mister Johnson?
I.
Favor?
I.
I.
Public hearing is now open for this twenty-two three dash twelve. If you have any comments, please come forward. I just need your name and your municipality.
Susan Lacks, CEO of Huntington Helpline, One Maple Avenue, Flemington. Can I ask a question about the ordinance before I give my plea?
Uh, if anybody can answer it, sure.
I I'm just uh, confused as to who are profit vendors, one hundred dollars, nonprofit vendors and um, and uh, who are outside of the uh, borough and nonprofit vendors inside. What the, what is a nonprofit vendor? Is that somebody who's coming to a nonprofit event? Or is that someone who is actually a nonprofit who has a food truck?
Okay.
No.
Sure.
I don't know, um. Those are the organizations that are putting on the event. Okay, so if it's a nonprofit that's putting on the event, then the vendor for that nonprofit be seventy-five dollars if they are not a business in the borough and twenty-five dollars if they are a business.
Okay, so in other words, even though that say a food truck is a for-profit, but it's coming to a nonprofit event, these are the fees.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, for a nonprofit and for SCP events.
Okay. Got it. In that case, again, uh, I know I was here two weeks ago. I'm asking that the ordinance as from. again, uh, I know I was here two weeks ago. I'm asking that the ordinance as proposed be modified to reflect the need of nonprofits such as Helpline to successfully operate a fundraiser that assists with the costs of our free programs and services to the community. The ordinance fees, as written, pose a hardship for a nonprofit trying to secure food vendors for a fundraising event. As I said two weeks ago, the seventy-five dollar fee for out-of-town vendors is steep when they incur other costs, including the fees of the nonprofit event organizer. I again ask that the out-of-town vendor fee at a nonprofit event be reduced to fifty dollars instead of seventy-five dollars. This would be a win-win for all, the nonprofit in desperate need of funding, the vendor who needs to make a profit and the borough, uh, and the borough businesses, but particularly the borough needing to cover its office staff costs, which I certainly understand. A vendor is more apt to attend our event if the fee is fifty dollars and the borough would not suffer an extreme hardship foregoing twenty-five dollars, but the nonprofit will if the fee remains at seventy-five. Helpline provides important services to borough residents, seniors, those financially challenged residents in need of employment and education and our successful next door program to employ and house the homeless. Our Salsa Night fundraiser is an institution in the borough for more than twenty years and helps funds, fund those free services to those in need. We start out with a deficit, about twelve thousand dollars in expenses, including that of borough services. Before the event collects one dollar to help pay for our services to the community. Bringing new and exciting vendors to the event means more people will come and see what Flemington has to offer, whether as a place to live or shop. We are always at the ready to assist where needed in the borough and beyond. Please assist us in helping others by making this important fundraiser a success. Please reduce the out-of-town vendor fee at nonprofit events to fifty dollars. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Flack. Any other comments from the public on order in twenty-two, three, dash twelve? See, you guys have a motion to close the public hearing?
Tilly, I'm welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adopt order in twenty-two, three, dash twelve?
Tilly, I'm welcome.
So that's the second, is any discussion? Michael, could you repeat what you said? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear when you were explaining nonprofit.
Okay, so, uh, if it's a for-profit event.
So this is events or?
No, no, I'm, there, there are two different types of that. So we'll start there. But it's a for-profit event. So if, uh, one of the stores decides to put on an event, it's a hundred dollars fee. That's where it's been and that's where it'll continue to be. If it's a nonprofit organization, um, or if it's the F C P, uh, what was happening was that that organization would pay the borough a hundred dollars and then the, the food trucks and the food vendors would pay nothing. Um, and, um, there was a large amount of, uh, net power that's done. So there was a, there was a, 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 a real examination as to how to make this work better um, and also take care, um, and give priority to the uh, vendors who are housed in the borough.
Correct.
So, uh, we took the fee, there was, there was never, uh, an ordinance that said that we would take a hundred dollars and charge for free. So we weren't really following our ordinances anyway. So, uh, fortified this by saying seventy, but any nonprofit event or F C P event be seventy-five dollars for an out-of-town food vendor and twenty-five dollars for an in-town food vendor. They're a member of F C P. Then they would get the twenty-five dollar fee.
Okay, cuz that's not how I read this. I read this as if it is a for-profit vendor, not a for-profit event vendor and a nonprofit event vendor, you know what I mean? I don't know if that word event needs to be added into there. Just to clarify, or am I the only one that was confused by that? What do you think? Is it clear enough now or do we need to like add a word that they could clear?
I think it's pretty clear, but I also think that we do wanna ask.
Would you think it's clear enough as our attorney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be, um, pro-egon, you know, like or someone is the tip of the spear on an actual issue. He's, and I think they have to interpret it that way.
Okay. Okay, I bet. Thank you. Any other discussion? Does that go hard? Do you have your hand up? We're really, sir, hopefully just forget to put it down.
Oh, no, I, I, she put it up.
Okay, does that go hard? No? Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Um, I guess I have a question regarding the, the comment that was brought up. I, I mean, is there, um, any sense to saying like all nonprofit vendors should be fifty versus the twenty-five, seventy-five split, or is that not reasonable?
I think, I think the goal is to give a break to our own borough tax-paying vendors over outside non-tax paying vendors.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, there was.
Is that the goal? That's the goal.
Well, the comment was that for vendors of, okay, so one of the problems is enough labor. So some of the restaurants and others can't take people from the restaurants that's open and then bring them to a festival that's also open. They just don't have enough labor for it. So they, they're losing business because people are going to the festival and not the restaurant. So this was to encourage them to, uh, and maybe even incentivize to have, to hire somebody.
Oh, so they, so they get a, a low enough permit fee, they can hire a couple of extra people.
They do something to encourage more than to be able to split the time of day, which has been part of that.
Which, yeah, I heard that at the Port Tomato Festival last year.
Yeah.
That are people. Okay, so then does it make sense to add without for-profit vendors and if somebody is a Flemington borough vendor, they should have. But the for-profit's not for-profit, for-profit event. So. Right, right, right. But, but what I'm saying though is that if we have a for-profit event in the borough, wouldn't we give preferential treatment to a Flemington borough resident that has a food truck? Or a Flemington, Flemington business that also has a food truck? Wouldn't that be an incentive? Like, why are we only incentivizing the nonprofit events?
Because the, uh, for-profit organizations can pay. If, if.
Oh, so this fee is paid by the event organizer?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, uh, if you're doing an event that's sponsoring something to make a profit, I'm not sure the borough should be, uh, it, it's just my opinion. You can disagree with it completely, but I'm not sure that we should be working to try to maximize the profit of an organization that's using the food trucks as an advertising. Uh, yeah, we could get people to come to the event. I'm com- I'm completely.
So, so, so Northfield Bank, I think on our bank, um, Northfield Bank is gonna sponsor something in town as an event. Um, hypothetically, the night of the fireworks that they're sponsoring, giving them a lot of, a lot of props here. Um, and they wanna bring in food trucks. So all those food trucks pay the for-profit fee regardless of whether they're in town or out of town.
Correct. Now, that's, that's the way it is now. That, I mean, that's the way it currently is, even if you beat all passes.
So can I ask another quick question? I'm looking at this. What, what does the F C P pay? Like if they had.
They'd be treated like a nonprofit. So it'd be seventy-five for an out-of-town vendor and twenty-five for an in-town vendor.
Okay, just the same thing.
So when they do the Corn Tomato Festival, whether it's Joe's Food Truck from Skilman, not Skilman, it's from Skilman, or it's uh, Matt's Red Rooster. So Matt's is gonna pay the in-town fee, Joe's Food Truck's paying the out-of-town fee cuz it's an F C P, cuz we wanna encourage.
Them to come in.
To come in.
Yeah, cuz there's still a fee they have to pay, uh, for our fire marshal to come in and do an inspection if they're, have an open plane. So. But yeah, it would be, that would, those would be the rates. We, we wanted to make sure that we're covering the rates for, uh, the borough and its staff because, uh, we, we we're, we're dedicated numerous hours of, then again, a lot of the events were happening with rapid fires.
I, I, you know, I agree with, uh, the, the council vice president. To me, it would be consistent to give a break, bigger break to our in-town for the for-profit events as well to encourage them to show up.
That's a great point.
Um, so can I, can I, um?
Want to table it?
I, I, if we, if we, well, we can pass it tonight and then put it in an amendment.
That's one option.
And that way it's in place. So we're not holding up any events in case anybody wants to do something um, versus tabling it and going through the whole process again. So that's what I would suggest is that we pass it as this and then we introduce an amendment to it in two weeks, adding the, the, the in, in-town, not the in-town for-profit.
Fee, then, correct.
And, and that will give us a chance to.
We know that language and they think we're sensitive. I just wanna hear what Mr. Parker's thoughts are on that idea. I'm just. Worrying wise, wanna know.
D E P speaks, everybody listens, right? So, um, I, um, I don't know. I think for in-town, I, I see what you're saying. For in-town, so if it's a match or if it's, uh, fifty-five, B show, whatever, give them a, uh. I do, but I do think you'd have to note that in-town it's gonna be this, out-of-town is gonna be this. It still has to be. Out-of-town still has to pay the full.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm okay with that. I'm also okay with, uh, for the, uh, defenders, um, out-of-town, the, um, I'm struggling with the seventy-five. Okay, so.
You think it should be a hundred?
Yeah.
Hundred fifty?
No, I think that should be at the top. Um, yeah, I'm struggling with that.
Because you have to understand that when these food trucks come in, whether it's a nonprofit event or for-profit event, they're still making money.
Yes, they are. On the flip side, we did have at least one vendor I talked to who, uh, has a store on Main Street that, that, that a hundred dollar fee would pretty much, they, they would have lost money because of the labor cost, the.
But if it's a store on Main Street, we're trying to give them a discount.
Well, now, yeah.
Right. We want them to.
Yeah, we're only talking about.
In for-profit.
Yeah. The other town is where, where it's, it's, it's. Okay, I, I'm.
I'm call, I'm calling the vote.
I know.
Okay. I have one, I have one more comment. Um, so if we, you know, pass and then, and then, uh, revisit this or whichever way we do it, but in terms of cleaning up the language, I, I do agree with, with Kim. It's, it's kind of, I mean, I know legally, if it's fine, it's fine, but it's it's confusing to me that it says for, for-profit vendors instead of for-profit events or nonprofit events. The other thing is we've been talking about F C P would get the lower fee. Um, but there's no F C P actually like mentioned in this ordinance. So I'm just wondering. Oh, all right. So we don't need to specify that.
Government, anything we do or they do.
Yeah, the, the whole reason why we didn't put F C P is because it changed your name a couple of times.
Okay.
So I didn't wanna mention them and then find and change your name again.
But they're government, so it's.
But they're included on, okay, just wanna make sure that's clarified. All right. Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
Was this events or vendors? I, that's what it'd be.
It's the not, it's whether, if, if the event is being grown by a for-profit or a non-for-profit, then it affects vendors who are basically all for-profit. So it doesn't, so all.
So it's current event and the event dictates what the vendor's gonna pay.
Correct.
So your point is well taken. So it does need to have that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Engelhardt.
Oh, we can see her, but we can't hear. Give us a thumbs up if you're okay. We can throw a thumbs down. You said you're okay? Does that go hard? Say yes. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes, and I'm sorry that I caused that to go long.
No, it was good. I've never been to talk about it.
Is that everything?
It's just.
Thank you. All right. Uh, and we will be putting an amendment to the ordinance as an introduction in two weeks. All right, uh, for introduction, we have a, a couple, oh, one. Uh, we're in twenty-two, three, dash thirteen repealing and replacing ordinance number twenty-two, three, dash eleven. Granting renewal of municipal consent to Comcast of Central New Jersey to LLC. To construct, connect, operate, maintain a cable television and communication system in the borough of Flemington, Hunter County, New Jersey. Uh, can I have a motion to introduce?
Tilly, I'm welcome.
Hold on a second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Engelhardt?
Uh, she's gone and muted. I think she might be boarding a plane right now.
Okay.
Oh, oh, she's back. Thumbs up. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes. Thank you. Public hearing will be April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth? The tenth?
Oh, I'm sorry, April tenth. You're right. April tenth. Uh, so that I alone can continue using cable in this town.
Really good.
I really need Google.
You really have to get a game here.
I know.
We'll get you like shit.
Okay, resolution twenty-three, eighty-six, same provision of chapter ten, Streets and Sidewalks. Check section ten, dash seven, establishment of open container areas of the municipal code of the borough of Flemington at certain dates corresponding with the Flemington Community Partnership's third Thursday sip and stroll on Stangle event series. Uh, this specifically, the councilman Parker brought this up to us about these Thursday nights. Um, this one specifically, I believe, were the first one in April and we're going to be doing.
Oh, no, these are for all.
And the for all.
It's for all of them. Yeah.
Are you ordering, I'm doing ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I changed my mind. I, I was firm on it. I'm like, I, it was always like the look of your ordinance. And as I indicated to the administrator, thankfully there was that.
Great.
Right?
Okay, so.
So.
Good on the.
Yeah, the, uh, A B C, A B C provision allows, uh, the relief from the requirement for nonprofits. There's certain circumstances with this being.
There you go.
It's in the, the.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion on resolution twenty-three, dash eighty-six?
Long move. Park a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Engelhardt. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, since we have press here tonight, you might wanna take one second and explain what this is gonna do and when it is.
Yeah, so this is actually a, um, it's kind of a sip and stroll. It's, um, it's really, it's really arts-centered, um, business and arts-centered. So it's a marketing and event activity. Uh, it's to engage new and existing audiences to spend more time experiencing the growth and the arts of the community. Um, it's gonna be, um, every Thursday through October, I believe it is.
Starting in April, right?
Starting in April. So the first one will start in April. Um, so it'll be the business and shops, um, both um, in, in the, um, in Stangle, um, places, but it's also to kind of help marry Main Street and uh, the other shops together as well.
So what will you be like to stick?
Uh, well, it'll be one, the beer, I guess it's Scott Town and.
So the distillery as well. Okay. Thank you. Uh, resolution twenty-two, three, dash eighty-seven, putting fireworks on July three, twenty-twenty-three with a rain date of July five, twenty-twenty-three. Authorizing road closures and waiving the permit fee. Can I have a motion, please?
Tilly. Go ahead. Tilly, you're second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Engelhardt?
She said yes.
Yep, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
For Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. Uh, resolution twenty-two, three, dash eighty-eight, awarding contract for fireworks services for the Flemington boroughs twenty-two, three, July fourth celebration. Garden State Fireworks, Inc. For eighteen thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please?
Tilly, I'm welcome.
Long was second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Engelhardt?
Yes, she says.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
For Long?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two, three, eighty-nine, declaring April twenty-eighth. Twenty, April twenty-eighth, twenty-two, three is Arbor Day in the borough of Flemington. We will be doing that Arbor Day, uh, proclamation in April. Uh, during one of our meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
Tilly, I'm welcome.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Engelhardt? Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Tilly?
Yes. Uh, number seven, I uh submitting and nominating the name of MW Financial Group as our redevelopment consultant to do our financial work. Under resolution twenty twenty three dash ninety, uh, can I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Roll call.
Now, this is for financial, the financial group's review.
Right there, the pilots and all that stuff, they'll review all that money stuff. All right, roll call, please.
The single heart. Thank you.
One extension, okay.
Mr. Johnson, yes. Uh, Mr. Long.
Um, I'm gonna abstain from this.
Hey, Mr. Parker. Yes. Yes. Miss Rosetti.
Yes.
This Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you. And we have resolution number eight, resolution twenty twenty three dash ninety two, operating a per year rate. Up to twenty eight dollars per hour for municipal court support. And a motion, please. Any discussion?
Yeah, just um in the second, whereas it should be up to twenty eight dollars, not. Rate of twenty eight dollars, right?
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
The single heart. Uh, Mr. Johnson, yes. Mr. Long, yes. Parker, yes. Uh, this Rosetti.
Yes.
This Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you, all right, we have a work session uh to discuss with Chief Jeritella and Corporal Brian McNally. This application that we all got um. For uh events. I'm leading this discussion.
I'll start it off. The long one, I think we'll be here for a couple hours, so. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to everybody about this. Um, we've been trying to uh. Get in front of you guys for a while, but I've been pretty busy, so we'll take what we can get, here we are. Uh, we're still kinda a little ahead of uh events, obviously, I've seen a few past. And uh, I'm sure there'll be a lot more to go. Um, our position on these events is that um. We need more information from the event holder. Um, they've been, uh, certain groups um have been uh great to work with. They've been uh really on point and getting us the information that we ask other groups, it's like volunteer. So we find that um with this new process that we're looking at. This will compile and motivate them to get us the information that we need. The police department's role and office emergency management role is to have a safe event. That's all we want. We want the information, we wanna be ready for any type of incident that would occur in one of these events. Um, I'm not gonna go into detail, we all watch the news, we all see what goes on in the rest of the world. Obviously, that takes place uh everywhere. Um, anything from uh lost children to uh catastrophic events. So what we developed is uh like a two-pronged process. Um, its first one is just an inquiry that we're looking to have an event. Gives us the little bit of the information as to what you're looking for, kinda like what our our final uh. Permit event is right now, it's very limited in information. Um, just enough for us to say, okay, and and for everybody to sign off from the uh from myself. To the public works, to the fire marshal, to get in front of you guys to say, is this what the borough Flemington wants to do, is this an event that we wanna have? Um, it's shouldn't be my place to say uh good on this event or not good on this event. Uh, you know, as far as uh some of the festivals and stuff like that, should be up to you guys, in my opinion. Um, obviously, freedom of speech events are completely different avenue. Um, which I just obviously okay those and we take the necessary precautions. Um, what I'm gonna do is have Corporal McNally go through uh the details. And what we're asking and how we would like to move forward with this.
Actually, um, okay, so basically. We have two forms in front of you. Um, one is our festival event street closure application. This kinda mimics the what you've known as a parade permit before, right? So any event that came through Flemington Borough filled out a parade permit, whether you were having a parade or you you were having a festival. Um, it was outdated. Um, we've come to the conclusion over the last few years that um events are growing. And um we're, we have greater requirements on us in the public safety field of information we need to collect. And pre-planned for. Um, and not getting the information from the event holders is creating um struggles on the public safety component. And putting our uh event plans together. So um not to be long-winded, but I'll just give you like a brief overview of kind of what we do. So um in about two thousand eleven, we took an all-hazard approach in Flemington Borough to um event and incident planning. Okay, that means we follow a strict incident command system um through like NIMS and and what's outlined through FEMA. Um, that will plan for anything from a missing child to what the chief was discussing for catastrophic event. Um, if anybody's had a chance to look at any of our incident packets prior, I have Corn Beer Tomato Festival here, it's. Roughly probably thirty pages, okay, um, and it covers everything. Um, so if you'd like to take a look at one later, we can go over it. But that being said, um, when we're putting, trying to put these all-hazard event plans together the night before, they're not very effective. Um, so we need to do a better job of getting the information from our event holders, so. A couple of things we've heard is the process is confusing, we don't know what we need, it's the same as last year, why can't we just go off that information? Um, I need a checklist, um, so we've uh I went out. And looked at what big cities are doing, what towns are doing that hold events four or five times our size. Um, and I believe we, uh, the chief and I have come up with a application packet that will be very successful for us. Um, what comes down to more so, I'll go through it briefly with you folks. Um, but is what do we wanna do if if our event holders are not meeting our deadlines? And that's, you know, unfortunately, where that's gonna fall to the council to decide. What what are our standards? Are there fees? Are there fines? Are there? Um, is there cancellation clauses if you're not meeting these requirements, okay? So let's just talk about tell a story, right? So we wanna have a festival in August. All right, what do I need to do? All right, January one, you can fill out this new form, okay, it's what we're calling the short form. This basically just says, I plan to hold an event, this is the date and time I'd like to have it on. These are the things that I'm looking to have, my road closures, the amount of people, I plan to have food trucks, a sound system, I'm gonna try to sell alcohol. Things of that nature, okay? Um, they would then turn this into the chief. Uh, the chief would distribute it to the uh public works director and the fire marshal, they would review it, they all know it's coming, great. Um, we're saying that this event's going to cause a ten-hour road closure. And we're selling alcohol and we're we're approximating ten thousand people coming into town. All right, that's gonna trigger to the chief to say, okay, well, that's, we need to do a large-scale incident plan on that. Okay, so now that's gonna trigger the special event application packet, okay? Um, within that is everything that um the event planner for either the police department. Or the officer emergency management, uh, depending on what level it rise to, would need to complete an incident action plan. Okay, um, so basically, we would want ideally to have this packet within ninety days of the event. Okay, um, it's nothing cumbersome, it's basically asking. Who, what are you selling? What are you trying to accomplish? How many people are you anticipating coming? Do you have any rain dates? Are you trying to put up tents? Um, are you bringing in portable restrooms? Are you gonna have fireworks? Um, you know, are you gonna need our DPW there? Okay, do we need to bring in garbage cans or roll-off dumpster? Um, do we need the street sweep when we're done? How many police officers are we gonna need is gonna be based on um the chief's safety and security assessment once he gets this package. Okay, um, the rescue squad needs notice for anything over twenty-five hundred people, they're required to have an ambulance on standby. Um, so we need to give them ample time. Um, so uh within this packet are are all these questions, right? So we would hopefully get that back in ninety days, um, great, we can start to plan and move forward. Uh, then after that, uh, we have some additional timelines that after discussing with public works, the staff here at Borough Hall. Um, you know, they need vendor lists, they need to have applications done for uh fire inspections. So then we're asking, so um we would like to have um the event packet ideally within ninety days, right? So that would be a standard twenty-five dollar fee, you get in in ninety days, you're good to go. If you miss that deadline. Um, you're at forty-five days, then the the fee would go up. Uh, I believe we proposed seventy-five dollars if it misses the the ninety-day window. Um, and then within thirty days of the event, we would need a vendor list with all the vendor applications completed. So all the food trucks have submitted, they've gotten everything into Borough Hall. The fire marshal's been able to schedule his uh inspectors for that day to come out, they know. Who's coming and how many trucks they need to inspect. Um, and then just all we need finally, uh, within two weeks of the event. Is just a final sight map of, you know, where are we putting people at the event, you know? Who's A is going to be Bluefish Grill, and they're gonna be here on the map. Um, so we have that that vendor information. Um, so that's kind of what's contained within this packet so that we can complete that. Now, the trouble is, we've tried to do this through emails and, you know, meetings. Uh, with event planners in the past and um we we don't get the response we need in the time that we need it. And that puts stress on Borough Hall, trying to get the applications here done. It puts uh stress on the police and on on the officer emergency management, trying to be ready for an event and making sure we have the appropriate resources we need. So.
I'm sure DPL you also.
Oh, absolutely, um, you know, Mike's, uh, there's been times that, you know, he's finding out three weeks before that. There's a, you know, fifteen thousand people coming into town. Um, so. We need to do a better job of making sure things are streamlined, this is going to do that. Um, it's going to help us and it's gonna help the event organizers, because they're gonna know exactly what they need. They're gonna need to know, they go and they check, okay, I'm having a ten, all right, I need this permit. And it's gonna tell them exactly what permit they need to file for. Um, and if it's online, they can hyper hyperlink it, it's already done. It'll take them right to it on the Borough website, they'll be able to fill it out, print it out, attach it to their application.
We start doing this now and somebody wants to have a major event in June, you're not making the ninety day.
Right, so everything within this would be at the discretion of the chief at this point, so he would have the ability to. Basically give leeway for certain things at this point, because we are a little behind the the ball in in regard to rolling it out. Um, you know, and there's always gonna be special circumstances, right? Um, something comes up, the event, whatever nature it is, it it gives the chief the ability to to override it based on his discretion.
So. I just wanna give some hypotheticals, so I can get your responses and some hypotheticals. Instead of not hypotheticals, okay, so on June twenty fifth. There is a dedication of a plaque at the um method, the Baptist church um traffic light. This is happening, they're expecting hundreds of people. It's at the church on their property, you guys even know about it?
Uh, I was aware of it, yes.
Okay, good. So do they have, so so my first question is, would they have?
So if that's private property, all the chief would need to know is um is the event happening? Now, if it's gonna require road closures.
Well, they they have invited the governor, they've invited congressman, they've invited. US senators, I don't know if any of them, far as you, yes, I think when Congressman Nadev said yes. Um, certainly if the governor comes, it's gonna require something and.
What what I always ask for anything like this, even on private property, and we've gotten a few where uh come and talk with me, come come and let's. Tell me what you what you're planning, what you're thinking, and because obviously, there's gonna be the triple tax, whatever you have on your private property. If you have a couple hundred people coming, we're gonna see uh an increase in traffic pattern at a minimum, if not parking issues.
Did they come to you, Corporal, or did you just hear about?
No, I heard it through the grapevine and I I heard the chief do it.
Okay, so how would the church know to come and let let you know something like this is happening?
Well, these, the the, we've done events with the church before, I mean. Leadership, but um.
It could be a different church, it could be.
Or a change in leadership.
It could be the change of the church, it could be the Fleming Castle, it could be any number of places where they suddenly.
And, you know, and when we hear of something, because, you know, uh, let's, you know, this this event, that's pretty simple, but obviously. Uh, you know, we've been through the protests and everything else, we have the ability to uh search and we hear things. And we are able to find out who is running the event and we can approach them as well, which is what we will do. Um, for example, you know, with all the protests, we've always always reached out to the group. Uh, not to uh, not to interfere or or uh deter them from having something, it's just. We're just gathering information so we.
But they need a permit to be on the sidewalk, don't they?
Not not a freedom of speech permit.
Okay, they don't.
They don't.
All right.
Um, I ask that out of courtesy and uh to work both ways, most, obviously, most people do. Um, and the same with um, you know, the church event that you're describing.
Okay.
They don't need it, but obviously, it would help us both if they would.
What about a neighborhood that wants to close their their public street off?
They they fill this form out.
The simple form?
The simple form, and we're not gonna make them obviously go through the the, you know, the.
How many days do you want them to have?
As soon as they know, you know.
So hypothetically, forty-five days prior, but it's subject to the approval and discretion of the chief of police. So if you have somebody that had something that was super important to them that just came up and decided we wanna have a block party. We wanna have a a vigil, candlelight vigil, something of that nature, they would just come to fill the form out and then they would i- in their description. You know, or meet with the chief um and explain their position, and then it's at his discretion that he can say, no, granted, no problem. Um, but we need to be aware of of what's occurring. Um, so that we can plan and have contact for these folks.
But when you say events which do not require borough services, I mean. Closing a public street requires DPL to come and bring in horses and take them away.
We we usually um pre-plan that, for example, if it's a Saturday. Uh, we'll have Mike Campion drop those out on a Friday and he'll pick them up.
The forty-five days is still enough.
Yeah.
That is a public service.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or borough service.
Yeah, yeah, but I would I would arguably say that's that's more of a courtesy service. Where borough services, we need DPW standing by. With garbage cans and garbage bags and then street sweeping services are gonna be required. Um, and that we need, DPW needs to be, you know, delivering, um, you know, equipment to the site. Setting up chairs, um, tables, things of that nature.
Do you have anything, I, I'm interested in this, do you have anything in here about fees?
So.
Paying the DPW and paying the police department.
Right, so yes, the the police fees are outlined as as uh same in the. The collective bargaining agreement, um, then there's a separate section you should have in the back. Um, there's a separate form attached from the rescue squad, what their fees are. Um, and if you're a for-profit, nonprofit, or if it's a town-sponsored event. So like the fireworks, right, I know, I understand that it's being sponsored this year, but it's still a town event, right? So the rescue squad would not charge for those services.
Right.
Uh, the uh memorial day, the rescue squad would not charge for the services. But what's happening is, you know, when we bring fifteen thousand people in. For, and we'll use Corn Beer Tomato Festival as the example, based on the NJOMS standards. And squads AOGs, their their administrative guidelines. There are certain requirements of what they need to do to staff an event that size. And unfortunately, the, you know, they, it costs money to do that, right? It's they have to bring ambulances in, they have to run them, because it's the middle of the summer. Uh, so you have to keep your patient compartment cool, um, they have to bring in staffing, which some of it is volunteer and some of it is is uh is their paid staff. That have to come in, so it comes at a cost. Um, to to bring those services into into the events. Um, so now they offer discounts for nonprofits, uh, fifty percent. Uh, discount for nonprofit, it's a for-profit event, their fees are all outlined, you can you can review those. Uh, but they've been in place for years. The squad has not uh necessarily charged those fees in the past. Um, but, you know, in the last couple of years, post-pandemic, we're getting back to events and they're growing. In size and in frequency.
I mean, I think we need to make sure that the DPW.
Right, so uh DPW basically, uh, they're. Right, and and unfortunately, their collective bargaining agreement um has specific overtime rates. And um time and a half for Sundays. So um Mike Camp usually what DPW's contacted, then they fill out. So I can work with Mike to clean up the DPW verbiage and getting those fees into the application.
Right now, we just refer them over to Mike Camp. So here's my, here's my concern, right, I mean, there's this a lot of stuff. And there's a lot of new stuff, so how is that being communicated to businesses and events and things? How, where is this line so that people know? Here's the procedure, gotta do this, that that.
Well, so this is, the, I mean, it it would, we could put another sheet on top of this, right, that said everything, we could put it on our website. Um, you know, our their goal. Um, you know, our, their goal tonight is mostly to get through the actual application process. Um, you know, the roadmap to it is pretty simple. Um, you know, my hope is the F C P is supposed to be the conduit to the businesses. So, you know, once we get the F C P on board with our new application process, um, they can get it out.
Have they seen this?
So, not that I'm aware of, but it's pretty much everything we've done with the F C P.
Plus, you know, a lot of these groups, uh, you know, I see Susan in the in the crowd there. Um, they're the, they're the same groups coming back and forth, there's very few new groups that come in and wanna wanna run an event like C A with Turkey Truck. Uh, the F C P with. Their events, Susan with her, the salsa festival, so the repeat customers, we have a lot of contact with them. And most people who uh, wanna hold an event in town, they call two places, they call either the police department. Or the town hall, they, I wanna hold an event, so they reach out a lot of times to us. Uh, at actually, we're gonna say.
Publish this someplace, whether it's on our site.
Definitely, it's already on the.
Publish, because they're, as as new businesses are coming in. And they may wanna do something, they need to understand the protocol.
And we already have something implemented under ordinance, so it's been there for, I would say, thirty years.
Uh, right, so in the.
Left used in two thousand six.
Yeah, so um, when we started working through this at the end of last year.
That's a different one.
Um, it was found that, we we were trying to figure out, well, who who sets and decides? What events happen, how do they happen? So we wanted to bring this to your attention this evening also. Um, and this is gonna be, like, we're not gonna complete this all tonight, unfortunately. Um, you know, this is gonna be a broader conversation that has to be had, but. You know, the Borough used to have what they called a Department of Community Events. Okay, that hasn't been used to any of the council, uh, that that was participating last year in conversations. So Mrs. Newman went through, um, and tried to clean it up a little bit, based on what would make it a little bit easier. Um, and then realistically, we could have a chairperson or committee director appointed by the council. Right, that would oversee the events with the public safety professionals. Um, or we could kick it back to our local emergency management council. Um, which is comprised of council, fire, police, EMS, um. And then they meet quarterly so they can go over and review the events.
I think it should be a part of F C P, that um, the first, I mean. This should be, we're taking my spot or my spot, this should be theirs because they're in contact with F C P.
That I would agree.
It doesn't make sense to form another group, to oversee another group, so.
Right, right, the problem.
What what the point of this?
This, this, the point of the committee in my, in my viewpoint is that it's, it's opening it up to a group of people to decide what the events are. For example, we've had a lot of um, five Ks that wanna come in, and five Ks are very disruptive to the traffic pattern. On no matter what day, except for Thanksgiving, because nobody drives on Thanksgiving, it works so well. But um, we've tried it with um, Girls on the Run, we've tried Saturdays, we've tried Tuesdays, we've tried Sundays, and there's always. Always a major traffic issue uh, outside of uh, Thanksgiving. I referred, I told them to do Christmas.
So I think what the thing is, I I remember this discussion with uh, you guys. Yeah, and that is, is that there does need to be kind of almost like a gate network. So that there is the conduit between, here's what, here's what will be in the past. And is this reasonable and is this a yes or a no, or is this? So, it's not purely, would be not purely my decision, but it would be the conduit to come and and say, hey, listen guys. Here's some event that people wanna, what what do you guys think? So it's it's more of a, it's more of the, it's it's what I'm doing right now with F C P, so it's. But they just want, they just want someone, and I and I do agree with them. Um, because I think what happens is that there's. D P W, there's F C P, and then there's police. And so it's a disconnect at times, so, right. And so what we're trying to do is get, get the connection so that it's one rope, one direction.
Is there other events, like, the these, the runs, that's a really great example of disruptive events.
Right.
That wouldn't be disruptive on Christmas, New Years, or Thanksgiving. And those are about the only three, because you really don't want people running on Memorial Day, because we have a parade.
Yeah.
Or the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
You know, or Veterans, well, Veterans Day is a workday for some people, even though. But, um, so. The runs are a really good example about keeping them.
Yeah, down to a limited number.
Right, but is there any kind of other example? Not counting the things that F C P does, or the salsa festival, or the car shows, that you could think of? That. Would really come in to be reviewed, like, who's doing stuff, that wants to do stuff in our town that we're not aware of?
I.
Well, wasn't the first Jazz Fest? Was that not associated?
Yeah, well, the original Jazz Fest was not, and was not an F C P event, right? That that got absorbed later on, so and even before Healthline Salsa Night was.
Okay, so that was.
Was a private.
That was a cool idea that somebody brought into town and it's been absorbed.
Correct.
Right, so, so there could be other cool ideas that somebody wants to bring into town and F C P, that's that cool.
And I can see that coming as 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 the town is getting developed.
Yeah, I mean, bike races, we get, we get solicited for bike races all the time.
We have bike races.
Exactly, but, you know, they, we've been trying.
They went to Somerville.
They're, they're tough events to run as well, um.
Yeah, they just, they wanted to make, they wanted to change the venue, they went to Somerville, they were supposed to come back and they never did.
There there, there there's, there are tough events, we had one, and I mean, we have to make sure the road is completely closed down. And there's a name, or helicopter on standby, that's.
Or a bike venue, you need a helicopter?
Yeah, yeah, there's some bad malicious accidents on this place.
Really?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Have you not been to Somerville?
It's, it's rough.
I think the point of this committee to stake the onus off of the police.
And.
There's, yeah, but if there's an event that we don't wanna hold in town, it should be.
It should be council.
That's making that decision, not just.
Correct, right now, the way the ordinance with the application with a parade permit is written, it falls to, everything falls to the chief.
Correct.
Um, so, you know, it's, it's not his, it shouldn't be his decision.
That's right.
Um, but, but also what came from this is towards the end of last year. The police, emergency management, council members started to take a lot of heat. From businesses that were upset with repetitive events occurring in the same location. And who's responsible for making those decisions? Well, in theory, by ordinance, it was this. Department of Community Event Planning, which hasn't existed since I've been around, but on paper, that's who makes the decision, right? So, cause right now, the chief's basically getting grilled with why are you allowing, uh, you know, every other weekend on Stangle to be closed? For arguably the same event, and who's making the decision of where the event should be held?
My, my only concern of just having it be the F C P is that. Then the F C P could come under fire, that they're blocking somebody that's competitive, so I would say.
That's why we're taking the onus off of F C P as well, that's what, that's, that's exactly what his point is. That's exactly what his point is, his point is that takes the heat off of everybody. And if the the onus is on us to say yes or no, it's not an F C P or something.
No, I agree, I I think, I think if we're gonna do a committee. If we're gonna keep to this ordinance and do a committee, the committee needs to be a couple of people from council. Uh, myself, two people, or myself, another person, plus Robin, plus. Uh.
So it'd be Jerry, Robin.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
You.
I would say that's a conflict to have Robin on. Because there's been conflict in the past with her not wanting other events to come on Stangle. So I would just view my opinion.
I think it depends on what role she's playing, if she, you know. That's, sure, all, all the organizations aren't involved with the F C P, so.
Right, right, and and there's been, you know, um, issues where. Other event organizers feel that the F C P blocks out.
Yes.
Weekends for themselves, uh, and they should have first priority, so.
But it's.
Allowing, allowing a neutral party to make those visions of where the events are, because everything's fair.
That's probably more perception than it is a reality, by the way. Perception is my, my reality, so, the 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 point of it is, I don't, I don't think that Robin should be, I think she should be a part of it, first of all. Because she is, you know, obviously there, there, you wanna avoid conflict, you also wanna be able to have input from everyone. Um, and it's, if, she's not the one who's making the decision alone, right? There's the committee who's making the decision. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's.
I I I definitely think that there should be.
I live in.
I'm fine with having.
I think, I think, if you're gonna be on it, I don't think it would be, you need to have. Two other parts of people on.
No, it's one.
Yeah, I just think it's a council person.
So, so. Going to the two of you, and I don't care if you both wanna answer, one of you wants to answer. Your perfect scenario of a three or five person committee, let's say five, because the two of you are automatically on it. Who's on it? Like, I, it doesn't have to be the names, it can be by title, so it's.
I would say at least the two council members, two members of.
Two people from the governing body.
Yeah.
The two of you.
Two of us.
Is it, is it, is it Mike Campion?
Yes. My Campion and Ken McCormick, yeah.
And Ken McCormick's on it.
Correct, yeah.
And. So we do or we don't, did we, did we say we did or we didn't agree to put? F C P on this as well, it's one person that is fixed right now.
Yeah, but if you have the F C P liaison on from council, that's the conduit back to the.
Okay, there we go.
So that way you don't have, you were done.
Mayor and the trustee from council, so we're still at six. Who else?
I think that's, or my opinion, that's, that's it.
Yeah.
And so they discuss.
What about the business administrator? The the liaison to the office room?
Hey, I, I, I'm not sure about that, because they only come in for certain items. For certain events, they're not involved with every event. You just don't want it to. But I do think it's important that you have a um, a communications person, somebody who runs a calendar. Somebody who's able to uh, push out the information uh, from a borough standpoint. So.
Right, and that and that is all outlined in here, that, you know, it'll be posted on the Borough website, calendars, um, you know, newsletters, right? Um, so.
If we're, if we're at six, right, that this group meets, like, walk me through this, this group gonna be. Once a month and looking to see if there's applications that come in or once every.
I think what we'll see is, once we get this implemented, we'll find a a influx of applications in January. Those people are gonna try, yeah, next year, people are gonna try and get their dates uh, as soon as they possibly can. So I think, you know, I think we'll have to just play it by year for the first year to see how we need to draw it, maybe probably by the end of. January, beginning of February, maybe linked up.
And is this, this, this actually blesses the event, it doesn't go through council? I mean, street closures have to be.
Yeah, council still have to.
Goes through council, but it's, it's like this is the group that's saying, is it worth taking?
So you're not having to have this conversation every time we wanna have an event, you know?
It already has, the group's blessing to move forward to you guys, dude.
It's already been that, basically.
Okay. Alright. Okay, um, so, so from us, you need. This thing to be cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
And amended by ordinance.
Correct.
And introduced, and what else do you need? Do we need to bless any of this other stuff?
No, realistically, we would just need to accept the special event application and the street, the festival event street closure application. Those would be the two new documents, this, I mean, this will take time, right?
Know why we have to bless documents.
Okay.
By resolution.
Okay.
Right, no reason.
So, they can be our internal document, I guess it would be the fees within the documents.
I was gonna say, but we would need to make sure that there's fees for D P W in the document.
Right, I, we have to get those back, and I can get those to you for the next meeting, the.
And as far as any fees, obviously, you know, those are just numbers we're throwing to you, that's.
Again, I mean, we don't have, we don't have to bless those, because they're.
We need fees, and we also need authority to tell somebody they can't have an event at that point.
But wait, but the fees aren't, the fee to really pass through on labor, it's not an application.
Well, I guess, yeah, the application fee, right, so it's a standard application fee, if you get the, if you get the application to us ninety days in advance. Twenty-five bucks, okay, if you miss that deadline, it's seventy-five dollars.
Trish, I know your fees would be more than that, so you have occasion.
Right, so do we have these fees already in an ordinance?
We did at one point, and I think it was uh, uh, taken out, we dropped the fees, uh, let's see.
We haven't been charging for uh, fees for events.
Fees and ordinance, application with typically administrative.
Right, so we need an ordinance introducing these fees for charging for events. If everybody is comfortable with that, and we need, we need to have this. Document. This, 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 of our administrative code amended and brought up to, it's not. So those are the two things that you need for us.
Yes, well, you need violations and penalties area, if they don't, somebody does not fulfill. An area, what is this, it's just fees, or is there also the ability to even say you, we decide you can't have any of that? If they're not following.
Right, so, I mean, I went through a bunch of different uh, organizations, municipalities and. Uh, like major cities in the state, outside the state. And daily rates of fees seem to be a common trend, like, you know, if you miss. A period of time, there's either a set amount, or it was like ten dollars a day. Okay, so every day, the the application was late past the window, it was ten dollars a day. So, that was just kind of the the roadmap I went with with this application, so. If you don't get your your application back within the the minimum forty-five day window, it's ten dollars a day after that. Until it's submitted. So that's, that gets the event organizer motivated to make sure that they're turning in their paperwork to us, because. It does have a negative impact on the planning side, it costs money, it costs money to do this planning. Um, it costs money for the borough staff to process the applications, and, you know, a firm is from, I mean, he he understands. Um, you know, what, uh, we had a number you came up with with how much a a standard event was costing in man-hours to process.
If, between eight and twelve hours, the staff, doing things like temporary food license and and processing fire. The, the big, one of the biggest pro- problems is that somebody comes in, I don't know, six days before then. And they finally come and they pay their uh, amount for fire inspection. Um, get the county health department to come out to actually uh, look at the food truck. And for us to process that uh, license here. And that was sort of outside of Susan, that was so much standard, um.
Thank you.
For for the events, and that that we're, we're, our busiest time period was that fourteen to eight days beforehand. Um, to have the ability for them not to push, because remember, I mean, we're not waiting. For them, we're doing our normal. Uh, uh, business, uh, and all of a sudden these come in waves and it takes away the rest of the time we have to do the other business.
You know, and then it gives, it gives the event planner the ability to tell their vendors, hey, these are, like, you need to get your stuff in by this date. Right, it's not just nonchalantly decide to roll down to Borough Hall, that, you know, we've had it where it's been, the event's been on Saturday. And they're showing up here Friday afternoon at two o'clock, expect expecting to get a permit to do concessions.
So, so in this box of uh, standard application fee, expedited, application fees. You wanna add in there that it's a ten dollars?
So what I did is, it's actually under stuff four, there's a timeline for submission box. Which the event organizer signs, understanding additional fees. Um, some kind of like whole harmless type stuff. Um, and then, you know, if Chris would, uh, you know, humor me, we could probably go over some additional legal. Stuff that should probably get put in that box one of these days. Um, you know, but, we can, um, but that's kind of where I outlined it for now.
Okay.
I think they should work Caitlin in my office to come up with what needs to be in the ordinance and what doesn't and give advice back on this. That's why we usually give it to.
Okay, leave one please.
We can, we can email it to you.
I'll email it, and I'll make connection.
Let's, let's do that and see.
We've done this before.
Is everybody okay on council with this fee structure? Absolutely, okay, everything's good with that? Um, so, you go ahead and.
We'll work with on with and make sure.
With the corporal to do with orders on the fees, and then, um, you and I maybe, Chris and. Bring Tony into this, we can work on amending the ordinance, this, the administrative code, to bring that up to speed and add this. By title, not the name, um, the composition of who should be on, so it would be. O O M coordinator, the chief of police, the D P W superintendent, the F C P executive director, the trustee. Appointed by the council, by the governing body, the mayor. That's it.
We, oh, yeah, and leave one that could be appointed.
Yeah, and we need one other, and we'll leave it, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the language in that old administrative code and see what else that would be. Yeah, and we need one other, and we'll leave it, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the language in that old administrative code and see what else that would be brought up, you know, not as well. Um, you have that number?
You have that code?
Administrative code, sure, you have it too. Just, uh, just put it to your computer, Google Flemington Administrative Code, and you'll get it. And just put in the summer and. So.
I have that digital also. Yeah, just email it to me, yeah.
You have a question?
Do you like it back there?
If you're gonna get an email.
Yeah, watch, yeah, it's better emailed that way.
He does?
You know, and try to.
Sure, I can't see that far, my guys.
Working on bigger strait.
Okay, yes, you can bring her in.
All right, all right, there we go.
Hello, Robin. Molly, Massachusetts?
Yes, indeed, and, uh, I'm. I'm trying to keep. From not barking from my hotel room in, uh, Boston, but I just, I think that, um. I, I hope that you will, uh, allow some of the regular event producers to provide feedback. On the form, since I think, um, this is an opportunity for us to have, have. Very fruitful generative dialogues about how to improve the process. Um, my feeling is, it has to be clear that none of us are adding. Hot dog vendors at the end of the day for any reason. Other than they're paying a fee and, and people come to an event hoping that there's food. And we've had challenges with both of those things, so this is, we're a small town. Um, I hear, I heard Susan's pain about the difference between fifty and seventy-five dollars. You know, it, the, the economics, and she said, she's twelve thousand in, in the, in arrears before. Anybody sets foot at an event. And, you know, that's a lot of risk to take on for an event that maybe doesn't happen because of rain or. Or other reasons, COVID, you know, you name it. Um, that's really, there is an economics to street festivals. That is, um, incredible, you know, we're, we're sixteen thousand dollars in arrears based on past events. Before we set foot on the street to have corn, tomato and beer, so, you know, a. Three hundred dollar payment from a food truck when we're worried. That we're not gonna have enough food and people are gonna show up and they're gonna go to Facebook and say what a horrible town Flemington is, and. Why don't we know how to get food at a festival? The, the reason we're making these decisions is not based on, um. Liking to drive people crazy. A lot of it is economics and a lot of it is trying to have the best event we can possibly have, so I think. Streamlining through applications, streamline, streamlining through calendaring, um, but just recognizing the. Enormous expense that our events cost. Um, is part of the reason why you would consider taking a food vendor late in the game. And I just hope that, um, we can have some input on how this is, uh, how this shakes down, because. The fines, uh, you know, even with a fine, if it's a ten or twenty dollar fine and it gets you. One more food vendor, so people don't complain, or it gets you, um, three hundred dollars. You know, it's hard, i- it, it's hard on our side not to make some of those decisions, so. I'm hoping we can have a really good conversation.
And just to be clear, Robin, the, there's no fees if your, if your vendor was late, it's more so. Um, actually, the, the information gathering portion of it and, and just having a vendor list in general prior to the start of the event, so. Um, obviously, there's fees that are state mandated, right, for food vendors? That's through the health department and everything else, so if those fees are coming late, that, we're not charging an extra ten dollars if you need to add a hot dog truck, but. I would hope an event that's bringing fifteen thousand people into the town has their vendors locked in months in advance, is always, is always the hope, and it's what I plead constantly.
It's, it is, it is a hope, and again, I'm hoping there's an opportunity to have a conversation about this, it's a hope, but the reality is. Um, unfortunately, that not all vendors, you know, some food, some food trucks plan really far in advance and other ones, we just. We are arm twisting at the end to make sure that we have enough food, and, and it's, you know, it's, a lot of this is. Um, that you, you, like, if you have fifteen thousand people, how much food do you really need to have? To satisfy them, you know, a lot of it is a guessing game, but my feeling is, in some way. You know, if we're gonna have fifteen thousand people, which I think is what we think we're gonna have. Um, knowing exactly which vendors are the food vendors may not change our safety plan. You know, it doesn't mean that you don't need to know where everybody is, but do you need to know that a month in advance?
No, that's, that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay.
In, in, in regard, just real quick then, for the temporary food license, it's not, we can handle last minute items, the problem is setting up. Having a fire marshal go out, making sure he's fully informed, when somebody comes on a Friday for a Saturday, uh, Saturday event. Or for that matter, on a Tuesday or Saturday event. And making sure that the, uh, because we don't have our own health officials, you know, we use county health officials coming out. And, um, making sure that they're scheduled, they have all the information they need. That's a lot of coordinating, and we, we can't really do that well with just a few days. So if we, we have a time frame that works both for event organizers, as well as, um. The, the office here, then that's great, right now, we don't have that.
Isn't that, but, but let's, let's, we can cut through all of this, the point of it is, is that's why the committee is gonna exist, right? Because we can go through issues like this and we can kind of button it down a little bit more, and we can hear both sides of the story a little bit. I don't think we're gonna solve that right now, I do think that we need to give Robin the opportunity to, um, to give some input on, on, on this form. Or, or, I ask you on the protocol, right, I, I do think we need to do that, extend that.
I'll be happy to send it through, it's everything she's asked for, for the last two years.
But, but in, in, in terms of last minute and all that, I think that's a committee thing, and I don't think that, I don't want to, of, of, the, the burden of you guys, or, or whatever the case may be, that's. That's where that exists, that's why that exists, so let's just, let's just get the info to, to Robin, have her raise over it. Put her input in, and then we'll go.
And one last thing, I think that, um. With the twenty-five dollars, uh, we have a very hard time getting our restaurants to come in sometimes and fill out forms. With the fire permit form, they have to, they had to get that for themselves, we were not allowed to purchase that for them. Because it's like a compact between them and, and the fire marshal. But I think for other, this, these other fees, um, if we could just, we as the organizer could just write one check. Uh, we would probably be willing to pay those twenty-five dollar fees just to lessen the burden on our small businesses.
It's the same with, just for the event application, not every vendor would be paying. It's just.
You gotta pay the fee.
This is the one, you're talking about the one we just, we just passed?
Yes.
I'm talking about your.
Oh, okay, okay.
That if it's, you know, if it's a check for whatever it is, if it's three hundred dollars, we were writing a one hundred dollar check that covered everybody. So now, if it's a three hundred dollar.
For local restaurants, I would love to see four local restaurants of corn, tomato, yet.
Yeah. However many it is, we, we might, it might be easier to have the organizer write you the check than have them all come in. If, if, if they're just coming in to give you a payment.
Okay. We'll, we'll make sure you're then part of that conversation.
That's awesome, thank you very much, and this is in- incredible progress, and I can't wait to see this forum and. Uh, we can't wait to meet your deadlines and to have incredible events. Uh, coming soon.
You're cutting in when to present your calendar to us?
Uh, I believe on, I believe at the next meeting.
It'll be the ten.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent, bring the dog.
She says, thank you.
Okay, it's a papillon, right?
Yes, she is.
Thank you.
Beautiful ears.
Thank you, anything else corporal and chief on this?
No, thank you for your time tonight, I mean, it's been a, uh, we're just trying to get this cleaned up so that we can, uh, make everybody's lives easier.
Well, thank you for all the work on this, um. It's, uh, it's very good and. Uh, we'll move in forward, hopefully we'll have something. Hopefully we'll have a, a couple of things for introduction at the, um. At the next meeting, maybe, it depends on how it work, if it has to be done again. And, uh.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right, we're up to public comment number two, um, Mr. Bill, I'm gonna give you about. So I'm gonna give you to nine thirty, and I am not entertaining comments or questions from at all, right, so you get talk. Until nine thirty on the nose, and nobody else does, except anybody else.
Thank you, so we proposed ten changes to the redevelopment agreement, um, most of them are ministerial, um, you guys all got this, what I call the G C. Which explains all ten, it shows which page and which section number of the redevelopment agreement that was signed last year, we're looking at. And I'll just run through them, I'll even run through the, the clerical one, so number one is just changing the definition of effective date, right now, the effective date, which triggers all the deadlines. Was the date of redevelopment you guys voted on in the last manner signed last year, the date of that. It would have to be if this amendment is approved, the effective date would be the day of the amendment. It's administrative, I probably didn't even have to put it in there, the lawyers would have assumed that, but anyway. Um, the next three are changes to the concept plan, and they're all as a result of engineering issues. Um, related to stormwater and floodwater, so the first one was, we had to, we were gonna give you guys the polo building as the town hall. Stangle Road has to be raised five feet because of the flood situation, that puts the polo building down in a hole, and it will likely flood. Fairly regularly, so we decided that's probably not a good idea for a town hall, so instead, we put Nine Church Street under. I'm sorry, we put the Allies Building at One Church Street as the new town hall. It's a little bit smaller, but it's all one floor, so you don't have to worry about any ADA issues, and it comes with more parking, there'll be a parking lot in the back. Uh, that's one change, second change is, we changed the location of the, uh, veterans apartments, we put those on the, uh, west side. Of the, uh, of the tracks, uh, in the twenty percent of the parking lot, that's part of phase one. Uh, the next one was the Brown Street Park was supposed to be on Brown Street, we owned, uh, two lots there, but. We discovered while we were going through the flood mitigation, the floods, uh, and stormwater planning, that Brown Street floods, and it was. And, and all of the houses on the west side of Brown Street in the last big storm had backyard flooding and basement flooding. And we decided to address that, even though it's not our stormwater, we're only legally required to solve our own stormwater problems. But because of the flooding and what we heard from the neighbors on Brown Street, we decided to take that entire piece of property and turn it into a detention basin. Which will hold back the floodwaters, store it during the extreme event peak, and then slowly release it through the storm drains, under the mall site, under the mall, and out to the brook. Um. Those three changes are three of the ten things on the list, so that's, so we're now up to, we've now covered four of them. Um, the next one that's clerical also is, right now, the thing says that there's a restriction on, on the sale of more than ten percent of the units to a single entity. That has to be just limited to the townhomes, because obviously, if we do end up getting a flood mitigation plan for phase two, which is the rest of the parking lot. We were talking about booking apartments there, we're not asking for that now, but if we were, we obviously couldn't keep to this restriction on page nine, because. You know, one building is gonna have more than ten percent of the units, but that's all in phase two. And only applies to phase two, to the townhouses in phase one, we will not sell more than ten percent of the units to any single entity. Um, the next one is the group home timing, the veterans, the sit, the disabled veterans apartments. Right now, the redevelopment agreement says you have to be building your reportables as you're building your market rates, well, the veterans buildings are two buildings with six apartments in each one. They're gonna get their financing from the Department of Community Affairs, there's plenty of money there, we have an affordable housing developer that wants to build them, who's already been told there's plenty of money, and when are you gonna get started? So we need to decouple just the veterans apartments from what the redevelopment agreement says now, which is, as the market rate townhomes are built. The affordable townhomes are built, that's fine as far as the townhomes, but when it comes to the veterans apartments. We can't say that so many veterans apartments have to be built as the apart, as the townhomes are being built, because it'll just. Tie the two together and they're on completely different financing and, and schedules. Um, the, the next one is the public park, we talked about that, I moved it from Brown Street to Nine Church Street, I had that building under contract, it's right next to the town hall. Uh, the proposed town hall in the Allies Building, I spoke to Ellen, who. The represents the Brown Street neighbors and has been working with us on the Brown Street Park, she actually thinks this is a better location, because it's right next to town hall. She said a lot of kids go out and play, their parents don't watch them on Brown Street, if they go into the Brown, what was gonna be the Brown Street Park? Who knows what's going on there, there's nobody looking over it, she loved the idea that it's right next to town hall, people are coming and going all the time, there's evening meetings. And people will be keeping eyes on that park because it's right next to the new town hall. The next one is also ministerial, right now, the agreement says that the developer has to maintain the public park, which was gonna be on Brown Street, but now we're proposing it. Nine Church Street next to the Allies Building, the new town hall, um, a home, it's not legal, a homeowner association, which we will have. Is not permitted to own or maintain a public park. So we offered to pay, not only pay for the park, pay for the land. And donate a hundred thousand dollars to the town, which should take at least five years of maintenance, uh, off your, off your balance sheet, and by then. Uh, our pilot agreement will be kicking in, phase one is a seventy-five million dollar ratable. Multiply that times the tax rate, and you'll see the millions of dollars that are gonna be coming in in the next four or five years. Um, certificate of completion number eight, again, ministerial, it says you don't get a certificate of completion until phase one and phase two is done. It has to be when phase one is done, it gets a certificate of completion, when phase two is done, if we work out the flood problem, it gets its own certificate of completion. This is just clerical ministerial stuff, uh, number nine out of ten, we wanted to have a definition of production partner. Um, we're talking with D R Horton, they may be the definition, they may be the partner, but what we did was, we described a capable production partner. In the red line section of permitted transfers. The last one is the pilot, again, ministerial, uh, affordable housing, like the veterans apartments, uh, require a thirty-year tax bait, and I think the redevelopment agreement says twenty-five. Um, twenty-five is fine for the townhomes, and it's all subject to you guys, your new consultant that you just hired to analyze the financial thing and decide whether or not. We deserve a pilot, and whether or not a pilot is gonna be beneficial for the town, it's totally up to you guys, uh, I think the number, we submitted our analysis for the pilot, I think the numbers are compelling. We're spending five million dollars on new infrastructure, on new roads, utilities, pipes, everything brand new. Um, we're spending up to four million dollars cleaning up the Faran Forge contamination, it's been there for a hundred years and is impacting your groundwater. We're building a new detention basin at a cost of a half a million, we're giving you a new town hall, which is worth about a million. Giving you a park right next door, which costs about a half a million, you add all that up, you're getting about ten million dollars out of this development of infrastructure and community improvements. And I really think we need to get this vote, I need to get this project started, we shut them all down, we chased all the tenants away, because we thought we were gonna be in demolition by now, we're months behind schedule. I really would appreciate if you consider at the next meeting, which you told me was gonna be on the, what was it, the tenth? Yeah, on the tenth, it would be great if I could be at the executive session, you can pick me out if you wanna talk to the attorney private, but I have a feeling it's gonna be questioned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Have any other comments, I just need your Susan Lacks.
Susan Lacks, CEO of Elkline, Womacville and Flemington. Um, I did read the five trends about the presentation from the police department, uh, and I do wanna give you a nonprofit point of view for, uh, an event planner. Uh, we have with the police department followed a very similar S O P for years now. Uh, to, uh, Corporal McNally's point, uh, the scheduling is very important, I'm there January one. By nine o'clock in the morning, they can attest to that, uh, to get my application in, which again, is very similar. I believe to what we've always worked with, I have a S O P of pages, uh, that is in the front of my Solsonite book. Uh, so. I wanna say thank you first of all, because they keep my event, which is about ten thousand people, safe. For everybody concerned, in the dead of the heat. For everybody concerned, in the dead of the heat, in pouring rain, et cetera. We used to have prior to Covid meetings with both the police department, OEM, DPW, um. Who else, Brian? Uh, everyone sitting around the table to make sure that this event went off properly, went off without issues. And if there were issues, who to call when. As far as the borough is concerned. Uh, I can't say enough about them either because they have uh, asked for things that we. Right, Mike have provided. You've always had my vendors. You've always had everything on the deadline with a couple of stragglers, I have to say, uh, to Robin's point. Uh, the difference between the FCP and, and nonprofits putting on events is that obviously. Our support businesses, but more importantly, it supports Helpline. This is our biggest fundraiser of the year. We will bend over backwards. To do whatever it takes to have a safe, successful event, which again, to Robin's point. The economics of these vendors who usually get paid to come have to pay us to come. And so when we have, as I said, over twelve thousand dollars, half of which, more than half goes to the police. And we're happy to do that because of the safety and wellness of the event.
It's state law.
No, I, that, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is we are, great, state law or not, what they do. Makes my job a whole lot easier when I'm running up and down the street. But the economics, as Robin said, is very important to the success of the event. And which is why I asked for the twenty-five dollar reduction because the vendors won't show up at the last minute. If they've had to pay my hundred dollar fee plus seventy-five dollars and last year, Mike and I know we lost. A couple of people who then came back because the fees were reduced. We live on this fundraiser and. The most important thing is to follow the structure because, and I think that's my SOP right there. And, and to have a committee like this, I think is extremely important as well. Because then you don't have people who are putting on an event thinking somebody's playing favorites, somebody's, you know. Uh, honoring the businesses over the nonprofits or, you know, the churches over somebody else. So I'm extremely happy about that. I'm also extremely happy about the, the uh, language change, which is why I asked you, Mike. Uh, about the event. What, what did that nonprofit fee mean in terms of the vendors? So I'm extremely happy that this happened. Um, again, I'm gonna ask you, since you've taken that ordinance to amendment. To rethink uh, the fees. I'm only asking for the twenty-five dollar reduction. I think it's really important. We do not charge the people on Stangle. We never charged the people on Main Street. Uh, the businesses there, they came for free. Uh, and we've tried to work with them uh, for years as well. I've had a conversation with Councilman Parker about meeting with all the Stangle businesses. I think that they have done, I mean, an enormous job with that SOP because they've kept my outline. In check all the way leading up to the event. So again, uh, I applaud your work. Your office work and I understand that you have to pay your staff. What they have done for us over the years is enormous. I just asked for the reduction in the fees and an understanding, as Robin said. That it's very difficult to bring people here and the reason behind this, whether it's for, for Helpline's. Uh, existence or whether it's for the business's existence, because we all know everybody's been hurting, especially for Covid. That you realize that this is a plus for the community and anything you can do to encourage participation. Uh, is so, so, so needed, particularly when you see businesses going out because they don't have employees, because they don't have. Uh, the same kind of exposure that they did prior to Covid. So again, thank you for your attention. Uh, and I would be more than happy to give in an offline session. Uh, the nonprofits' point of view as well. So thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
So this is you.
It's on, it can be on any.
Probably brother, boy and girl. Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, Ms. Rosetti, if I can meet with you in the very near future, I don't know if you are afternoon after four is open at the site where the flag is. I got some information and think we can put this thing to rest. I don't know if you were contacted the property owners or not, but I have been. And I just.
If you can email me, um, we can set something up, okay?
All right, fine, thank you.
You can email me, we'll um, figure that out.
All right, one last comment here. Uh, I was here the last couple meetings with Mr. Johnson's situation. Uh, I'm just. I'm just overwhelmed with the fact that this council's handcuffed in terms of its ability to remove him. Uh, the exposure that Fleming is getting right now is just horrendous. Uh, this gentleman, Mr. Johnson. Jeremy explained, you know, as, as well as you could concerning everybody's feeling concerning his situation. Now, I mean, that's one thing. I don't know him personally, but this woman that just came up here. Uh, and stated what she said, I think we're in uncharted waters. I think you should call a special session, have an immediate vote. And do what you have to do. I, I don't think, I don't think this really exists anywhere else. In the type of gravity it does in such a small community. This was damning, what this woman said. It's hearsay to me because I'm not retaining the facts. But this council basically let this woman speak for quite a few minutes. Point the finger, et cetera, et cetera, and the whole borough knows. It is unprofessional as far as I'm concerned for a council person to retain his position under these circumstances. Totally unprofessional. And for you guys to have somebody sitting there. Just enduring this, enduring this, not having, you know, his own voluntary, you know, say, hey, listen, I'll step down. I think you should go in a special session and vote on it right now.
Do you want to opine on that?
I don't think you have any legal uh, jeopardy at all concerning, because this, this is gonna happen continually. I've been meeting, I guess.
There's a legal authority here.
There's no legal authority here.
Does it have to be legal or does it just have to be representative of the council on a local basis?
The left official, there's no legal authority for each governing body.
I'm just gonna say under the circumstances uh, with what Flemington is, is undergoing here. Mr. Johnson, you should step down as a professional. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Okay, we're gonna move on to payment of the bills. I need a motion to authorize to pay the bill in the amount of one billion, two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, four hundred eighty-five. I'm sorry, one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. And a motion?
Billy, I'll move.
Okay, uh, we'll call friends.
Mr. Singleheart?
Yes.
Oh, she's back.
Mr. Johnson?
Oh, good.
Mr. Long? Mr. Parker? Ms. Rosetti? Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we are going into an executive session uh, for the purpose of talking about personnel. Absolutely protected, definitely, which is potential appointment matters. Uh, it is twenty of, is five minutes. Five-ish is ever taken a minute. Well. I'm gonna, I'll be ready. Okay, I have a motion to go to the. Just a second, I'll save her. Okay.
Thank you.
So it's gonna go a little break.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to return the meeting?
Tilly, I'll move.
One day, but I, yeah, I'm sorry, everybody, I really am.
Good night. Oh, sure, yeah, sure. You have to get a rower than I do, so.
Yeah.
That's for sure.